Good evening, we're gonna get started here. Welcome to tonight's Board of Education. Ms. Reed, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gardner?
Here.
Mrs. McAvina?
Here.
Mrs. Alpassgar?
Here.
Mr. Sherbin?
Here.
Mr. Stobie?
Here. Would you please rise for pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we dive into our meeting today, I just wanted to address a couple of things. Logistics for tonight, so first I see that we have a lot of guests here this evening, so I want to welcome all of you and thank you for coming. For those who might be attending a meeting for the very first time, please be aware that there is a QR code with the agenda available at the sign-in desk there, so you can download a copy of agenda. We also have the stuff on screen as we're going through it. So also tonight, as you may or may not know, we audio-record these meetings, so if a friend or family member is not here tonight, we'll be recording the video and it will be the audio and it will be put online on district website sometime, hopefully tomorrow, along with any slides that will be presented later in our presentation. So our quick meeting flow for the evening is that we have a couple of special presentations, followed by an item on our agenda that's called informal board discussion, and during that time, Mrs. Maguire and Ms. Reed will be sharing some information about our financial situation and talk about some of our plans and possible solutions going forward. After they present, the board will have some time to have an internal discussion, ask questions about those plans, and we'll kind of proceed from there. After the board has wrapped up with that piece, which is not interactive with the audience, we have an item on our agenda called public participation. There are cards in the back there, and at this point, we're gonna transition from us talking to listening to all of you who wanted to speak tonight. So there are cards in the back if you wish to sign up to speak. Our board policy is that each person can speak up to three minutes for a total of 30 minutes, but we can vote to extend that. It sounds like we have more speakers tonight, so we will likely do that when we get to that point. So if you haven't had a chance to fill out a card and wanted to speak, you can fill that out and give it to Dr. DB. That said, we hopefully will answer some of the questions that you might have been brought with you tonight through our discussion before that. So with that, we're going to start with a couple of special presentations. We have the Avon Lake Schools Foundation to start tonight.
Hello? Oh, hi.
Hi, Kristen.
There is a lot of people here. I'm not used to it. Nervous as all get out. I'm Kristen Mesa, president of the Avon Lake City Schools Foundation. This is our second time this year for our grant cycle. We had one grant this cycle and we approved it. It was for Mr. Wolf, for a 3D printer for his classroom, which serves physics, and I believe he said AP Environmental Science. So we approved that at 1949, I believe, is that tiny number? That's about it.
So you'll have your other grant cycle at the same time?
We have our next, our third grant cycle will be in January. As of the last time I looked, we have two or three. So we'll do that in January, and then you'll see me again in probably February.
Would you mind, with the large crowd here, just explaining a little bit how the foundation works with the process for folks applying for grants and how those decisions are made?
Oh, sure. I would think that a lot of the teachers and staff might recognize me. We are a 501(c)(3) that works with the school district. We fund grants that are outside of the school's budget, STEM-related, special education, arts, science, music, all kinds. There's a grant application on our website. The link is always the same, never changes. We go through them three times a year, so they sit until we process them in May, October, and January.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions for Kristen?
Can you share some of the criteria for what you look for in approving a grant?
Specifics isn't something that we kind of go by all the time. It's more, does it fall within what we want to promote? What is truly outside of the school budget? If it's a capital improvement, prizes or stuff like that, we don't approve. So it's really an application by application. It's not anything set in stone.
Awesome. All right, well, we appreciate when you come to meetings and share the good news, so we are thankful that you came here tonight and look forward to hearing about the next grant cycle.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you.
All right, we have a couple of special presentations. I guess we have our friends from Westview here tonight, correct?
That's right. Our school spotlight this evening is Westview Elementary, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Moore to come on up with his students and staff and share a little bit about what they're doing.
You're welcome. [laughter]
Good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Nick Moore, principal, Westview. We have our K kids group here with our two advisors, Julie Norris and Grace Salata. They're gonna share some information about what K kids does for our community at Westview and for our community here in Avon Lake, and that's all I have to say about it. They're gonna do all the talking.
All right.
Hi, I'm Nora Moran, and some of the things we do, and some of the activities we do at K kids are October sock collections, Christmas toy drives, and spring break snack bags. And now Estella and Jade Lees will share how those are important to them. The Christmas toy drive is important to me because I feel like we are giving toys to the poor, and if the poor have any friends that celebrate Christmas with toys, I feel like we're giving them toys to celebrate with, too. I like the Thanksgiving turkeys because we can say what we're thankful for on the feathers and give it to our teachers.
Hi, my name is Freya Drummer, and some other projects that we do are the Super Bowl collection, Veterans Day cards, Valentine's Day cards for senior citizens. Caleb and Ryan will share how these are important to them.
I think that the Super Bowl is important to me because you get to give food to the poor, and it makes me hungry.
I think the Super Bowl is important because you're giving food to the poor that can't
Other things we do are signs for Special Olympics, various collection drives for CRS throughout the year, thankful turkeys for teachers. Audra is gonna talk about how signs for Special Olympics are important to her.
I like signs for Special Olympics because we're celebrating kids with special needs like my brother.
Ms. Norris and myself have been the co-chairs of K kids for the last three years. We currently are at 63 members. First through fourth grade at Westview are invited, and we meet every four to six weeks, 30 minutes in the morning. These guys take an extra 30 minutes out of their busy mornings to join us and do some great work at Westview.
I think we're trying to do like things that are hands-on and where they can see and feel that they're making an impact, so that's why we have a variety of different things, just to kind of get them that feeling, so they know that, how important the community is. We enjoy it.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Any questions from the board for our students or our coaches?
So how do kids sign up for this program?
At the beginning of the year, we send out a form that just explains what K kids is. This year, we finally made the switch to collecting emails digitally, which helped a bunch, rather than trying to read, you know, handwritten emails. And parents signed up through a Google form, and dates are given ahead of time, and they're able to put those dates on calendars and make that commitment at the beginning of the year.
Awesome.
How many total kids at Westview are involved in K kids this year?
Currently, we have 63 members.
Wow.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Well, kids, I just wanted, before we do applause, I just, kids, I want to just thank you. It is really hard to get up in front of public and talk in front of people, especially with this many people, so I really appreciate all of you guys coming today, not only just to tell your story, but also to present in front of everybody, and we are all very proud of you for all the stuff that you're doing at Westview.
Yes, there you go. Thank you.
For the second part of my presentation this evening, thank you, Westview, you guys did a great job, and I think this is the largest audience the kids have ever had to speak in front of, so nice job. If you remember, in August, on our first day of school, we had a board meeting, and the board had asked me to gather information about our enrollment trends and Ed Choice, and so I have just a brief presentation this evening to share that information. So this is our opening day enrollment trends. The current year is in yellow, and you'll see in the last four years, the grand total, we're down 276 kids in the district. Looking at kindergarten, we have 208. 12th grade, we have 305. And there's a few ebbs and flows, but that is not unusual in the area. There are, I'll show the birth rates in a little bit, but there are just less kids that exist in our area right now in Lorain County. From the end of last year, not counting the graduates, this year, we had 175 withdrawals, 59 enrolled in private schools in either Lorain and Cuyahoga Counties, 49 moved to another Ohio school district, 22 moved out of state, 10 withdrew from preschool and didn't tell us where they were going, 10 enrolled in a school out of the country, it was actually interesting to see that number, eight enrolled in either homeschool or virtual school, and 17 moved out of the area, but they didn't tell us where they were going. So on the very top, I know this is hard to see, but this, we'll attach this to board docs tomorrow, you'll be able to take a look at it. The reason we're seeing less enrollment is looking at the population, and this is just Avon Lake. 15% of the population is the majority of our school-age kids from fifth grade on up, 10 to 19 years old. They comprise 15% of Avon Lake's population. From 0 to 9 is only 10%. So that's a huge drop going from 0 to 9 to 10 to 19, and that's why, as you see the numbers going down each year, our kindergarten class is getting a little bit smaller, that's reflective of the birth rates. Ed Choice is something you've probably heard quite a bit about in the news. It's basically, it started out as a program for failing schools. Two years ago, the governor and the legislature expanded it to anyone, regardless of how their school district was doing, and it gives vouchers to attend private schools. It's 61, 66 for K-8 and 8408 for 9 through 12. And something that was intended to help people from failing schools, well, they changed the criteria. The criteria is if you are 450% above the poverty level, you can still get a full voucher, which is about $150,000 a year income for a family of four, all the way up to 785%, which is about $260,000 household income a year, you get at least a partial scholarship. So that explains why there's been a huge increase in awareness of the program, not necessarily a huge increase in the number of people attending the private schools, but now your tax dollars from the state are going to fund these scholarships. The other thing that's interesting about this is the constitutionality of this program has been challenged in court. It's three times the court date has been postponed. It started, it was supposed to be heard in '23, and the earliest it will be heard is sometime in the spring of 2025. These are, by grade level, the number of participants in Avon Lake City that get Ed Choice scholarships. The high school is where the largest third of our scholarships go. We have over 200 kids that get scholarships to private schools that are high school age. But again, not alone. The first column is this school year, the second column is last school year, and these are all of our neighboring districts. We had 595 this year, but again, look at North Ridgeville, they had 943. Westlake, which is a smaller district than Avon Lake, had 825. Avon, which is a little bit larger district than us. And speaking of Avon, as another example, you may have seen this in the news, they've also experienced the same drop in enrollment. They're right across the train tracks from us. They graduated 355 last year, and they have 230 in their kindergarten class, so it's not just an Avon Lake phenomenon. We have about 17% of our kids, school-age kids, on Ed Choice voucher, which is about average. The highest is 25% at Westlake. This is not all of the private school kids, these are just the ones that get an Ed Choice voucher. And then the last thing I wanted to share, a totally unrelated topic, but we had a professional development day on November 1st, and we had a wide variety of topics for our staff to continue to learn and to grow, and it's something that we're continuing to focus on. The academic programs in our district are just fantastic, and our teachers are always eager to learn and to grow, so I wanted to share that as my final piece.
Jack, can you explain, for the good of the group, what it means to be constitutionally challenged and on what grounds? Because I think, we've talked about this before, but I feel the need to continue to try to educate myself and others on this particular topic, and why it's a detriment, maybe the second part, to public schools.
So the constitutionality of it is being charged on separation of church and state because the largest majority of the public tax dollars are going to parochial schools or other religious schools. And that's the premise of it. There are a couple other factors. There was no challenge when Ed Choice itself was set up, because it was part of No Child Left Behind to deal with schools that receive failing grades. But this is actually called Ed Choice expansion, so it's not the same program. This Ed Choice expansion is purely what you see up here, the 450% above the poverty level that anyone can take, up to 785% above the poverty level. Yes, you can.
I also would just like to add, if you look at the numbers up there of how much a family qualifies for, so 6,166 for grades K to 8, 8,408 for kids in grades 9 through 12. What is challenging for public schools is a school district like Avon Lake, we receive from the state $800 per child, period. So a family in our district can apply for one of these vouchers and get $6,000 or $8,400, depending on the age of their child, when every single child in Avon Lake, we are only funded at the state level, $800 per student. That's the crime in this, and it's your tax dollars that are paying for this to be taken advantage of.
And is there a limit? Say if you had two children in a home, can you get more than one voucher for the same amount as well?
Yes.
So potentially, a family of four could get two vouchers for $8,400?
That is correct.
$16,000. Can you put those stats of the enrollment by grade level back up for our district? So the one thing that strikes with me when I look at these numbers, I think it was two or three years ago, we had our largest class ever that came through Avon Lake, and we had peaked about at 340, but I cannot recall any time in the last 12 years where we literally only had one class that was over 300 in that. So, you know, these numbers are definitely trending across the board, and little blips in individual birth rates are not there now, because we're saying from across the board, especially at the lower levels, those first K-1 and 2 numbers are really low from what I remember historically.
And these were opening day numbers. Our enrollment's actually a little less than that right now. For example, the high school shows 1106 opening day, they're actually at 1094 right now. It's the first time, and I think 15 years they've been under 1100. They were 1296 a few years ago.
Any other questions for Dr. DB? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next we're gonna move into our informal board discussion. Ms. Maguire, you gonna kick us off here?
I'm gonna wait for Jack to get to set up on the agenda. All right, so wanted to provide a little bit of an update on where we are with planning for reductions. As everyone is aware, both our bond and our levy failed on November 5th. On five different occasions, we had put out just kind of a graphic that showed like what could happen, because there was four scenarios that could have happened with our two issues. They both could have passed, they both did fail, but one could have passed and/or the other one could have passed, and we put out a list of reductions based on whatever combination would have happened with those two issues. So we put those out there, making sure that we were letting everyone know what the impact would be in any one of those scenarios. Unfortunately, we are working, if you remember the graphic, there was a center section of the graphic that talked about if both levy and bond issue failed, what some of those cuts would be. And so we are currently working on them. We got to work right away Wednesday morning, the day after the election, to start doing the planning. And I will own, and I told my staff and I shared with you, we did not spend any time on the cuts prior to the election. We weren't gonna do that. We needed to spend all of our energy and get that focused on having these issues pass. So there wasn't any type of pre-planning done, other than putting thought to what are some of those reductions and what do they need to be. So our planning started first thing on Wednesday morning, after we learned of the election results on Tuesday evening, trying to organize what those reductions would be. And we're currently working on them right now. Many of the reductions that were listed on there, one depends on another. So for example, when we talk about redistricting after closing a building, we have to draw those attendance boundaries, and then once you draw the attendance boundaries, we have to analyze the kiddos and what grade levels they're at that live in those attendance boundaries, to then go back and figure out, how many sections do you need of 4th grade at a building, how many sections of 3rd grade? And we need to do that first, before we can actually talk about staffing and what does staffing look like. And so one element of the reductions is dependent on what, and it's kind of a domino effect on what happens then with other ones, so it needs to be done in a very thoughtful kind of order. And so, you know, we're working through those right now, we're working through staffing. We met with our union today, we've worked, we've met with our transportation, we use our transportation software to determine what those attendance boundaries are, where the kids live, and to determine those sections, and then we will work into staffing and looking at some of the programming. We also are currently analyzing, I have our, Dale Krasnoik is analyzing what some other districts do in terms of pay-to-participate fees, what that increase could look like, what some of the rental fees are. We currently have many groups and organizations that use our facilities that we don't currently charge a rental for, so we're looking at what those fees would be, because again, we don't want to be priced out of the market, meaning we want to be in the same ballpark as some of our neighborhood schools when we look at creating those price lists. So we're currently working on that and researching some of those things, looking at eliminating non-emergency overtime. Unfortunately, in our district, the reason we have overtime right now is because we are understaffed in certain positions, especially in our custodial and our maintenance areas. We don't have, but we need coverage, because there are sports that go on on Saturdays, and there are games that happen at night, so those things need to be covered. That would be considered non-emergency overtime, but really looking at cutting, what does overtime look like in our district? So we're working on eliminating that completely and only keeping the overtime that we need to keep district functions running. We talked about building fees, we're talking, we're looking at, I know one of the things on the list that is near and dear to everyone's heart, including my own, is the elimination of full-day kindergarten. We've gone back and forth on that quite a bit, had a wonderful conversation with two of our kindergarten teachers yesterday, it was very thoughtful conversations, and, you know, one of the things that we were wrestling with, and I talked to a couple of you about, you know, we've had parents, and God love our parents, who have said, you know, well, what would it cost to cover kindergarten? Because the tuition that's paid right now for full-day kindergarten does not cover the full cost of kindergarten. So we charge about $2,800 tuition, it covers about 40% of the cost of running full-day kindergarten. So full-day kindergarten is about a million-dollar expense to the school district each year. And so we've had parents say, well, you know, and we understand the importance, I'm an elementary-trained principal, so I understand the importance of full-day kindergarten and that impact, and so we've had parents say, we'd love to pay for the full amount. And so we were very concerned about that, and, you know, so gracious, but then, what do we do with families that can't afford to pay the full coverage of kindergarten, which is about $6,280 a year, if parents fully funded full-day kindergarten? And so, you know, the thought was, you know, do we eliminate that? Because then it's not, we're not bringing in that $400,000 that we do get from the tuition, but we're also not spending $600,000 to run a full-day program. We talked to our attorneys some more. I think when I talked to the attorney the first time and spoke to both you and Kendra, there was not an understanding that we currently charge tuition. And so I had another conversation with them this morning and said, hey, we're not doing anything differently than we're doing right now, all we're doing is going to look to increase that tuition, if that's something that, you know, the board wants to consider. And so rethought that, sent a legal opinion to us and says, yeah, you can do that if you want. So we are having conversations about keeping full-day kindergarten, but maxing it out to a certain number. So right now, it's offered to anyone that wants it, and they're able to pay that tuition, but going to a full cost and still having to control our costs, looking at offering full-day kindergarten next year at about 120 slots available at the $6,200 rate, and then that would mean a max class size of 24. So we're tossing that around as an idea right now, instead of trying to eliminate it altogether as a possible solution and a compromise of how do we still, or how are we still able to reduce our costs, but yet still provide a service that we know our families want and we know is so important to our little guys? And so looking at a compromise plan for full-day kindergarten on that. Some other things that we're looking at, the cuts that were put out, is looking at the building supplementals and extracurriculars, we're doing some analysis on that to see, you know, do we have, we have these supplementals where we might have a chess club, but if there's only two kids that participate in the chess club, is it worth paying that supplemental to do that? So we're doing that analysis and looking at how many kids are actually participating in some of these supplementals before we think about just filling them for next year. So that's part of what's going on. We have a due date of having that analysis done and having a recommendation by March 1st. Eliminate the middle school teaming, we're gonna be looking at eliminating that model, doesn't mean we're eliminating middle school by any stretch of the imagination, but eliminating how the kids are teamed. Teaming at the middle school, while it's a very effective model and it keeps kind of that small school feel, it's also more expensive to staff, because you have different, you have one teacher doing each of those discipline areas, and so it's a little bit more expensive to run a teaming model at the middle school. We talked already about eliminating the SOAR program, which is our program that services our gifted children. However, eliminating the SOAR program as it sits right now does not mean that we plan to eliminate gifted services. Our teachers have been trained and have those clock hours that are needed to provide those gifted services within the context of a classroom. So we are looking at ways to still provide gifted services to those kids who were serviced in SOAR, still with the elimination of SOAR, but still provide those gifted services for those kids. One of the other things that was on there, the close a copy center, we have an area that we, teachers were able to send, if they had bulk copies they need to make, to a copy center. We have that staffed by a halftime person, but eliminating that service, and then copies would just be made at the building to eliminate that service off of our books for a bit. And then some of the other things, the non-walking field trips, we've currently done that analysis to see how many field trips that actually is. There's quite a few, so we need to look at prioritizing or setting a set number of field trips, either by grade level or by department, to say, you can take these many field trips, rather than looking at a reduction of all, because some of them are co-curricular, meaning they have, they are tied to some standards and things that kids are learning in their classrooms, and so we don't want to completely eliminate those, but, you know, really take a hard look at what is gonna happen. Eliminate our summer school and jumpstart program. Unfortunately, a tornado made us do that this past year, and we weren't able to provide that service. In years past, that was paid for by ESAR funds. Since we no longer have ESAR funds, this year was going to be the first year that we charged for that program. first year that we charged for that program. Again, the charge for that program was only going to cover a small percentage of the cost to run those programs. So it's either making a decision that we're going to charge full boat what that looks like, or eliminate that program altogether. Reducing the busing to state minimums was something else on there. The state minimum is two miles radius of any given school. We currently bus to 2.25 miles from any school. So any child that lives a quarter of a mile away from their school is getting scheduled on a bus here in Avon Lake. That is something that, that we're, that we're looking at. We know that's, that's a hardship on our families, looking at a way, if there's a way to compromise that. I'll, I'll get back to that in, in a little bit here on, on my other part of my conversation with you. And then the last thing, obviously, we know closing ear review and redistricting the kids at ear review. Closing a building is never an easy decision by any stretch of the imagination, but we, you saw the enrollment data that Jack shared, where enrollment is going. You see the last class that we're going to be graduating this year has 300 kids in it, and then every other class below that is less than 300 kids. So our enrollment is declining. It is not fiscally responsible to keep open four elementary buildings when we have 16 extra classrooms empty in, in all of the other buildings. We need to consolidate. The only way that this district is going to save money on their operating costs is to reduce our footprint. And reducing our footprint means that we're, we are managing less facilities. And so that was the idea of the bond issue. The idea of the bond issue was that we were going to close buildings and consolidate and do a pre-K5 and a, and a K5 building, which then, and a new middle school, which would have been that we were running four buildings on our campus. Again, reducing our footprint reduces our operating costs. And so we calculated the, the emergency levy amount in issue 16 based on the fact that we would be reducing our footprint to four buildings. And so that didn't happen. And so by closing one of our elementary schools, we are reducing our footprint slightly. That closing of a building, we will see about a $700,000 operating savings to our budget by closing those buildings. For every building that we close, it's about 100, it's another $700,000 in operating savings. And so, and then we, of course, had the elimination of, of five of our sports teams that we currently have because of the rental facility or the rental fees that go with those particular five teams. It has nothing to do with those five teams. It simply has to do with the rental cost to be able to provide those teams. You guys all know I'm big hockey mom, so the hockey's killing me right now. You know, it's, it's terrible. And I, and I hate that we have these rental fees associated, that we don't have facilities that, you know, we can have our golf team play at and we have a, we don't have a pool to have our swim team and we don't have an ice hockey rink for our, our teams to play on. And so those rental fees, year after year, and they've only gone out, our golf course fee went up from $12,000 the one year to $20,000 the next year. So it's, it's a little bit cumbersome to be able to keep that as an expense for, for, to run those teams. And it's, it's unfortunate that we have to do that at all. Many of the cuts and some of these compromises that we're trying to come up with in this reduction is, is trying to keep it away from kids as much as possible. We don't want to hurt kids. That's not our goal. And these are, these are not easy decisions and they take time to plan. And so, you know, we're asking for grace and patience from our community. We have, we have set internal dates for us. I know the ear review staff, I was over there last Friday and spent some time there talking to everyone and interacting and, you know, talked about giving out a survey for them to have some say and to possibly where they get placed next year. We've also talked about making sure that they also can enjoy some time off over the holidays and trying to have those staff assignments to them before they go on break for the holidays. We have internal dates set. We're making decisions about kindergarten by, in late January because we have our kindergarten registration on January 28th and we want families to know and have information prior to us starting our registration process. Many of the fee schedules, because they would not go into effect until next school year, we've set an internal date of March 1st for us to have that information out and all the while staying up and letting the community know where we are. Redistricting is not as easy as drawing three lines and going, here you go. It's really analyzing and looking at those kids because one of the other things we're trying to minimize with this redistricting is that if we have kids that are currently in third grade in their building and they've been there since kindergarten, if some of those kids that have been in that, that school now have been impacted by redistricting, we want to make sure that we could possibly offer the opportunity for those kids to stay in that building. But we can't do that until we actually analyze where each kid lives, what kids are, what streets would be impacted if they were going to Redwood up right now until third grade and then all of a sudden now they have to switch over and go to Eastview. We want to make sure that we, we analyze that and, and see if we have enough room to keep those kiddos in their building. So it takes a little bit of time. And so that, that is why we don't have this figured out yet. Our goal to have that figured out certainly is by the first of the year so we can let people know because we understand that registration, if people are not happy with the placements, they need time to go to, to register at another location. And we want to make sure that we are aware of that and we are conscious of that and we are giving families ample opportunity to make decisions. But we also want to make sure that we're making the decisions right the first time and not have to come back and tell you something different later. So it's just taking some time to go through that. So we appreciate patience and grace with making some of those tough decisions that we're, we're facing right now. The goal in all of this is to cut 2.5 million dollars out of our budget, which is about half of what the levy ask was. We asked for $5 million each year for the next 10 years. That, once we make cuts, some things can come back. Most of the time they don't. So those cuts, they compound each year. So we might save 2.5 million dollars this year, be 3.5 the following year or 5 million the following year. It is really important that we stay in the black and that we do not drop below that line where we get a letter from the state and the state comes in and they take over. It's a very real thing. It happened in Lorraine. It happened in Youngstown and Medina City Schools, very high performing district, much like ours, got a letter last year. And why did they get a letter? We talked to their treasurer when we were down in Columbus and he shared with us is that they had a negative cash balance in their, but their five-year forecast in '25, '26. When we end our budget for fiscal year 2025, we are going to have less than the two months of worth of expenses that the state recommends that we keep. So our monthly expenses, last year we talked about, they were $4 million a month. With increases this year, they're closer to $4.4 million a month. Our monthly budget or monthly bills, at the end of this fiscal year, we're going to close with just about $8 million in our cash balance. It is very important that we do not show a negative balance in our cash, in our cash balance because that is the trigger for the state to send a letter to say, you better do something or we're coming in. And I know these cuts are hard. I know they're hard. They are, they keep me up at night. I went, I went to the doctor today. I won't even tell you what my blood pressure was because it was ridiculous. But if the state comes in, what you see now, what we're proposing now, not even close to what the state's going to do. So while these are very, very difficult decisions, it is imperative that this district stays afloat and we stay in the black.
May I? I know that this is not just an Avon Lake problem. For anybody that's been monitoring what happened with school levies across the state, it seems to be a temperament, even outside of this community, but was that something also discussed in Columbus? And I only ask as we have also been contemplating, what do we do next, right? So the cuts are one side of this, but we're not going to sit on our hands. But I'm just curious in your, because I wasn't in Columbus with you guys, if there was conversations because that was following many districts, asking their communities for funding. And my understanding is that many districts did not get the support.
Thirty percent of the levies across the state passed this November. Seventy percent failed.
Is that lower than typical from your?
Much lower than typical. You know, and a lot of it has to do with the economy. We get it. We, we're all feeling it, you know? So we, so we get it. Why? But 30% of the levies across the state passed.
Kendra, jump in there. I attended two sessions in, in Columbus specifically about districts. They were both actually Northeast Ohio districts that passed bond or levy issues in the last year, not at this past election, but about the community engagement steps that those districts took. Because I was curious to hear what level of engagement they had. We, we have all the rules on what we can do and not do. But in both the presentations I went to, I was pleased to hear like the process that was followed here in Avon Lake with the fact that we did community engagement sessions, that we did coffee talks, that we did certain mailers and certain, certain steps. Like we follow the process. So it's, it's obviously wasn't necessarily a process issue. It was an issue that what we put on the ballot was too expensive and the political climate did not support it. So we have, as a board, have to react to that when we start looking at our solutions going forward. The positive is we, I think we now kind of have a way forward as far as engaging with the community based on what we've done and what other districts who have been successful have been doing. And I think we're aligned there, but we have to get the solution fixed. So there's a lot to unpack on, on logistics, but if I had to summarize, Joelle, a little bit of what you were saying, there's a lot of interdependencies. We're working on things. There are some deadlines that we can commit to now and some that will come into focus. What's going to be kind of our means of keeping folks updated on these because there, there are interdependencies here. So what's your thoughts there?
Sure. So I mean, we've, we've put something out in my newsletter last week. We plan to give updates as to where we are in the process with certain things. As we figure out fee schedules, as we figure those out, we will send those out via, you know, my, my communication to the, to the community. And so post things on our website. And then, you know, the other part of that too is, you know, at the end of the day, we, we do all these things. We still have old buildings. We still have old buildings. We still have a need for operating money. People don't like these cuts, but if we don't have new operating money, we're not, we're put in a position where this is going to be our conversation every year. And so, you know, the thought is, you know, what, what do we do in May? Do we go back on the ballot in May? And, you know, that's a conversation that, you know, the board needs to have with some options. We've heard from the community twice that they did not want the building plan as it was originally designed. So as you recall, when we lost in November of 2023, it was, it was too expensive. So we came back, we reduced the cost of the plant, the, the building plan. We added on an emergency levy because we also heard from a survey that we did, don't ask us twice. So we did and it still didn't go through. So we still have a need. We need to, we need to process through. How do, how do we engage differently? You know, does the building project, it, it didn't pass twice in its current state, meaning that we were doing the two elementary schools and the middle school. Do we look at taking off a building and not looking at three buildings, looking at two buildings? Because at the end of the day, the only way to control our operating costs is to reduce our footprint. And as long as we are running six schools next year or seven schools this year and a bus garage, we are, we are going to struggle with this problem. We have to reduce our footprint and we should reduce our footprint. It's the most fiscally responsible thing to do when you've got empty classrooms and you've got declining enrollment. We don't need seven buildings. So we have to figure out what is that combination, if at all, that we come back with in May to say to the community, okay, we heard you. We're not, we're not tone deaf to what you're telling us, but, but you can't be tone deaf to the fact either that we still have needs. We still have needs for facilities. We still have needs for operating costs because if that doesn't happen, we're going to continue to have this type of conversation again next year. Something to consider, we can talk more about, but that's where we need to focus our, our energies on to say, is that even a feasible thing to do? One thing that we're, we're doing right now is we're getting together a statistically relevant survey, so not a Google Doc where people can go on and answer 50 times with their email. This is a, a statistically relevant survey that is done by an outside company to get us some feedback before you make that decision as to what we want to do. Look at possibly some voter analysis to see and, and hear from our community. Again, we're talking about getting that out. We have information for January to kind of, to, to process. If that is something that the board wants to do. Unfortunately, we're behind the clock. And I know people last time said, you're rushing this through. We're rushing this through. We unfortunately are bound by Ohio Revised Code, which gives very specific dates for filing. So if you want to go on the ballot in May, you must file. There's a couple filing dates and I'm going to mess them up in autumn. You can, you can correct me. But the, the, the filing date to file a bond, and remember, the board has to pass two resolutions prior to this filing date, two resolutions, that's two meetings. And there needs to be some work from our auditor in between there. That filing date to do, to go on the ballot again in May for a bond issue is January 28th of 2025.
Is that the second resolution?
That is the second resolution. It has to be, has to be filed by then. So the, so the board has to consider it prior to January 28th for it to be filed on time and on January 28th. For an operating levy, it is February 5th. But even so, we have a very short window. I cannot believe it's Thanksgiving next week and then back out, you know, two weeks at Christmas. We're really under a tight timeline. So when I say that we are looking to do this survey, it's going to be a quick turnaround to try to get some statistically relevant information from people. Again, we cannot ask the question. We're not allowed to ask the question, why did you vote no? We can't ask that question. So that's not going to be a data point that we have because we're not allowed by law to ask that question. So we're trying to get some information because again, I think the question is, the community didn't like the project the first two times. So what is palatable, if anything? And I think we're, that is what we're looking at between now and then. We also will send out, just to get some information on, you know, what, what do those, what do those combinations look like that are feasible? Because clearly what our community told us is what we asked for wasn't. So what is a palatable number, knowing full well that there's still a need here in our district?
Will that survey allow you to? I think the thing, two things. I'm not going anywhere for the holidays. So I will have whatever meetings it takes to sit down and have these conversations, period. Because it's going to take a lot of me.
Sure.
Second question. In this statistically relevant survey, will we be able to poll people based on whatever scenarios we think are appropriate, based on what we've learned from the last two election cycles? Because I think that's going to be important.
Sure. I, I agree. And I, I asked that question specifically. We have a meeting scheduled Friday morning at 9:30 where we're going to put that together with Ohio Revised Code sitting right next to us, saying, what can we ask and what cannot, what can we not ask? And so we will be putting that together here on Friday. The goal is, is to have the company start making phone calls and sending out rent, because it's got to be random too, of course. That information will start going out December 9th.
So hypothetically, I think to follow on what Kendra was saying, if we were to face this in and say, we would put on in May either a middle school option or an elementary school option, are we able to get a sense from the community what they would prefer, which we tackle first at the elementary level or at the middle school level?
That's the question that I asked today. And that's what we're being, we're being cautious on whether or not we can ask that directly. But we're working with a company that does, this is what they do. And so, you know, is there a way that we can gather that information and ask appropriate questions?
I think, I think just from an expectation setting standpoint too, I mean, what we're talking about in all these scenarios, when we started down this project back in 2020, it was to fix all the issues from K to eight because those were all the buildings. What we're talking about now is looking at various options where there's going to be some existence of a keeping of, an existing building of some sort or buildings combined with, with construction and not being able to do it all in a fell swoop. So I think that's, we're to that point where we have to start to consider that because the, all the solutions that we've talked about when we tried to solve the whole problem at once, cost too much. And so ratcheting that back, that said, the first time you hear, okay, well, a certain group would get this or a certain group would get this based on their age group, that creates within our supporting group, some folks who will say, well, then, you know, I'm not getting that new building. But that's the reality, I think, that we have to face now that, that the, unless we can somehow find some sort of solution with less buildings for the price, what we had was not going to work. So.
Yeah, I agree. I think if, if you went with a middle school solution, yes, you would, you may not get a bill. If you're younger, you're not going to get a building next year, the next two years, but you would age into the new building instead of if you were, if we did the elementary. years, but you would age into the new building instead of if you were, if we did the elementary solution, half those kids would age out and never be in a new building and we're, now we're building for kids that, you know, aren't even born yet, I guess.
And I guess we also have to work through what the cost structure looks like for keeping any of our existing buildings because in all of our analysis and consideration, the configurations, we're going to eliminate all the old buildings and build all new. So.
Yeah, I have, Dr. Lawver is currently working on that as well, what those cost factors are, because the numbers that we were given were back in 2020. So we need to apply 2025 cost sets to those repairs. And Dr. Lawver's been very good about doing some of the things that were on that list. That list that was given in 2020, you know, we've had to do things. We've had to patch roofs. We've had to do things because of safety issues too. We've had doors that weren't working. And so we've done some of those things. So it's looking at what have we done at those buildings so far? What is the 2025 cost set that goes to the things that are still needing to be done at those buildings and coming up with that new cost per building as to what it would be to look at repairs if that's where we're put in a position where we have to do that. So we're, again, some grace on that because it's, it's, it's a huge project. It's seven buildings worth of lists. The, the report itself is 500 pages long. So it's going through, taking out things that we've already done, adding new things because in five years, other things have gone wrong, like a fire system at one of our buildings that wasn't on the original list. So we're updating those so that we have some good numbers for you to look at here in the next couple, couple to few weeks.
Can I just bring us back to, I don't mean to stop this side of what feels like a more positive part of the conversation, because I think we all just want to figure our way out of, out of this wet paper bag. That's what I feel like I'm in right now. But back to the cuts, what, and I know you said you're going to keep us surprised, but what do you need from us as a board right now, if anything, as you're navigating this very difficult situation? As we are navigating.
You know, again, I, I'm going to use the word grace and patience because this is hard work and I respect and appreciate the fact that many of you have never been through this before. Poor Jack, myself, Ned, we've all been through having to close a building in, in other districts that we've worked in and it's, it's emotional and it's not easy work and it's not a decision, and I want to be very clear about this, that any of us wanted to make or be in a position to have to make. But we are also hired to keep this district running and running effectively and being fiscally responsible and that's what we have to do. And none of these decisions are easy. And so to understand and just provide some empathy to understand to all of our community too, is that these are not easy, but we've got to stay in the black. We have to. We're not, we're not allowed to function in the red. And so it's, it's really important that we are not singling out groups of people. We are not doing anything. We are looking at a collective package. I think when we talked about the, the reductions at our last board meeting, one of the things we said, if you look at each reduction in isolation, it doesn't make a difference, right? If our bills are $4.4 million a month, closing a building is saving $700,000. That doesn't even save, you know, 25% of a, of a monthly bill. So it is necessary to look at those reductions as a collective group and not isolate to say, you know, well, this is only saving $150,000, so why not just spend that? Or this is only saving $400,000, so why not just keep that? It's a totality and it's a big picture. And we, and in our roles, have to stay at that big picture level and that's going to be really important as we navigate through this.
I would, I would like to put forth as an Erieview mom, that as this, as this progresses forward, that you consider hearing from the parents too about when you're putting kids in classrooms in their new schools? Because I think those friendships that they've formed are going to be so important.
Sure.
And, and unlike any other year, right? Because we leave it to the teachers. We trust them. We know what they're doing. They shake it up. It always works out well. I just want to put that forward. And I don't, I don't, I don't think that's a big ask. I think it's something we can do, an architect, but I think it, you know, even if that kid has one friend that they know going with them, I think it could mean, make all the difference in the world. That's all. Because I think we're, you know, a lot of us are accepting that the realities of this and it's hard. And we all too are centered on the children too. And I know I've talked to a lot of moms and I think more of us are worried about all-day kindergarten than we are about the building, right? And so we have this higher view to like this community effect. So I just wanted to put that forward as an idea.
Absolutely. I had a meeting with Mrs. Isley Johns today and she expressed the same concern from PTA and I said, please have them call me. I'll sit down with all of them. We can sit down and have a conversation. So I'm happy to have a meeting scheduled. We can talk through that. That's a great point of making sure we have friends. I know we will be looking at that because we're going to engage with our staff at Erieview to help us kind of create what that looks like moving forward.
I appreciate that.
Joel, could you touch on, on the redistricting? Why? Because I hear this too is, you know, why do you have to redistrict a whole city? Why isn't it just taking the Erieview kids and just saying boom, boom, boom and spreading them out? Why, why does the whole city have to be redistricted?
I wish it was that easy. Unfortunately, it's not for, for the reasons that we just talked about too. So, you know, we took, you know, 20 kids and we stuck them here and then what if then you took those 20 kids and they're, they're not in the right grade levels for us to just plug them in? You've got to look at redistricting as a totality. You can't just look at it and say, we're going to take these 20 kids and put them in this building. Plus it also goes to where we have empty rooms to say how many, because once we determine that, then it's to go back and readjust those boundary lines to say, all right, do we really need to readjust this now because this is how many classrooms we have available in this building? If we only have one room at Westview, it's not, can't stick too many more kids in there. So you can't look at it just by taking that, those kids and doing it. And it, it impacts busing. So, so that impacts busing. So if we're going to cut busing back to the, to the minimum, like then who doesn't get busing? So one thing is so dependent on another that it, there's a logical order in which it has to go in and you can't just say, okay, we have six rooms open at Eastview, so we're going to take six rooms out of Erieview and stick them there. Because then you might end up with six second grade classes and only two first grade classes. And then what do you do the next year when you have now six second grade teachers but only two first grade? So it's, it's more of a puzzle to put together than it is just simply pulling classes here and pulling classes here. It has to be looked at in totality and really do an analysis of where the kids are living and who goes where. And that's what we're working on right now, to minimize the impact as much as possible.
Jennifer?
So to go back a second ago, when you were talking about some of the options and how we might engage the community going forward, I think where we go from here is the question that's on everybody's mind in, in Avon Lake. And so to start to try to paint a picture of what the community can expect, when you talk about surveys and different things, it's more than just what kind of building configuration do I like? There's a cost to everything. And with every cost, there's trade-offs and there's no perfect model because the perfect model that gives you everything is obviously the most expensive and priced out of a point that, that can be afforded. So can you maybe describe what the community might start to see to help educate on where we find, we've talked so much over the past two weeks over that sweet spot? How do we find the right plan that is palatable for the community to get the job done for today, tomorrow and the long term? What can they expect to see?
I mean, you can expect to see, and again, this is, we're, we're barring on a, on a hard legal line here that I, that we don't want to cross. And, you know, because the auditor of state says you can't ask these certain questions, you know, would I love to put out another options and say, here, which one do you like? You know, and which one's most affordable? I would love to do that and I might be able to do that. I just don't know that yet because we're going, we're creating this, this survey with a company that does this, what they do. And if we can ask those questions, by all means, we're going to ask those questions. I just don't want to put something out there and then it's like you're not allowed to ask that question. You're straw polling because we can't be accused of straw polling. So I, we're just being very cautious about that. So I, I can't answer that question too much because I'm not quite sure what it is yet that we're allowed to put out there. I will have more clarity on that on Friday. And if we're able to do that, by all means, we're going to do that.
But if it was feasible, it would be allowable for us to take however many options for three, four, or five, whatever, and sit down in the community and?
Absolutely.
I, I think too, we, we can't lose sight of the fact that we do have an architect firm still engaged with us that can give us these things. And for those who, who may not be as close to this process, when we have gone to the ballot in, in each of the past scenarios, we aren't getting to the planned point where we're actually developing blueprints and plans. The, the, the architect work that is done is to ballpark costs within a structure based on square footage, based on size, number of students and so forth. So that, the mechanism of looking at different options from the view we're at now is not insurmountable. It's something we can do in a, in a relatively quick side. I know we've already started some of those discussions, which is good. I think the community aspect of this though is, is to wrap their brains around because for three plus years, we've been talking about a solution that looked like this and now we're going to talk about a solution that's going to be much different, including keeping some or, or some figuration of our old buildings. So at least it's a positive. We have the relationship with the firm and we can turn around those numbers fairly quickly.
I think to piggyback on something Jen said, that we have to balance this, you know, trying to get as much into these, the solution to, to meet the needs of the, of the, the school age kids with the needs of the community. Because Joelle, you and I have had this discussion, I don't know if Avon Lake's unique or not, but the majority of voting public in Avon Lake does not have kids in the school. So they're focused on, if anything, what is the cheapest solution that you can give us that we will vote for? Because if everyone, and I assume everyone in this room would vote for it, but unfortunately that's not enough in this city to carry the issue because the majority of residents in this city do not have school age kids anymore in Avon Lake.
Well, and to build upon that and to draw out some of the things you've already said, we have to keep us in the black today, tomorrow, three years from now, 10 years from now. So I know a lot of these decisions are super emotional because it impacts services today in the here and now, but it's a part of the bigger picture that the cuts today and the operating and the bond and all of these things kind of go in for the long-term plan. And that's, that's the finish line. When we can get ourselves to a sustainable place where we're consistently operating in the black and we are fiscally sound and have the right footprint. So I think I just would offer that up. I have to remind myself of that. It's really easy to get involved in what's going on today and that's important, but it's a piece of a bigger plan that we are operating in sustainable over time. And that's hard to do.
And I agree with Jennifer because right now, we're in control of the cuts. And if we don't take control of the cuts, somebody else is going to come in and they're not going to consider the friend. They're not going to consider the teachers. They're going to come in here and say, hey, it's 30 to one and these teachers are gone. They're low man and you've got to up these class sizes. You have to cut these programs. Somebody else will dictate. We do not want that. And these cuts are hard and they're hitting us all very hard because the community spoke. They knew these cuts were coming and they still voted down the bond issue and the levy. And to me, I'm angry. I'm disappointed in Avon Lake community, very disappointed, because they should have been fighting for our schools and they did not. So we have to, we have to be in control of what we do.
I think just one other broad picture too is that, you know, because we get these questions, we, we've already got some thoughtful emails from people. Hey, board, what are you going to do on this? I just want to reinforce that, like the leadership of our district here, our treasurer, our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, many other folks, Dr. Lawver, they are all working really hard on that and they are in, in the details better than any of the five of us. And they are going to continue to drive the decision-making process. We as a board will continue to be the bumpers and the, the go-between with the public. But, you know, we, we have to stand behind our leaders as they work through these decisions and understand that there are, there's going to be unpopular decisions. But, but we as a board cannot, we, this is not our full-time job to be here and to look into all the minutia of the decisions that have to be made to level of the people who know it the best. So I just want to clarify that because I think there is some confusion. We're going to approve what we, today, we're going to be voting on our five-year forecast as an example, and that's a step in this process. But this is an ongoing process of many decisions at a daily level that Joelle and Jack Autumn and others are going to be involved with. So we, we, like you said, I'd like to ask the question, what else can we do to help? But, you know, we, we have to support and not lead here. We have to, we have to be that voice to, to support and, and ask the questions as we're going along so we don't make any missteps.
I agree, Jim. I just want to make it clear and I'm not speaking for anyone but myself, but I will be available for any and every working session that needs to happen between today and January 6th, January 28th, whatever the date is. I don't care what it takes. And so to me, that's support. If you guys need access, I am saying I will be available because we have to have these conversations in public. The public deserves to be part of the conversation. And I know that the holidays are upon us and we all feel that. Quite frankly, I don't care about the holidays. This is more important. I'm just saying that that's a Kendra point of view and I'm not speaking for anyone else and I'm not asking you to put that forward. But I do see that it is our role to be available to you as you guys try to navigate these things because there may be things that you need us to opine on in partnership with you. And so I just want to make sure that it feels tight. I, when I see a mountain, I try to climb the mountain. That is my MO. So Joelle knows this. She's taken more phone calls than in the last couple of weeks as I'm trying to climb mountains and she's educating me and she's making sure I understand the ins and outs of these decisions because I don't work in school administration and I do appreciate that. And hopefully I wasn't contributing to your blood pressure, but, but it, it's a lot to feel from the community when you don't really kind of appreciate all those intricacies and the intertwining and, you know, contract, like the timing of things, I think is what I'm really speaking to.
And to that point, Joelle, I mean, as we get into the calendars and setting dates, is there, is there a timeline that where you would like to reconvene us for another meeting at this point before the scheduled meeting? Or do you want to wait on the, on making a decision on that?
Yes, but I, I'm not going to give you a date yet because I want to line up this survey first so we have something to look at and talk about and be able to provide you with some data. There's no point in meeting and just?
Yeah.
So I want to be able to give you things to look at so that you have documents to make decisions around.
Okay. That's fair. Any other questions for? Okay. All right. So next, we're going to move on to the public participation. And just as a reminder, I, I kind of read the same description so that everyone's on the same page. Public participation at our board meetings is permitted to allow individual members of the public to address the board on issues of public concern and is not intended as a forum for extended conversation or two-way dialogue with board members or district officials. The primary role of the board is to listen and reflect on your comments. Sometimes board members may ask, respond or ask questions, but not always. Whether respond or not, your input is valued. The public participation is for general comments on matters relative to the school district. Those who wish to the board must complete a comment card, which we talked about. Each person is given three minutes to speak until a total time of 30 minutes is used. So preemptively, I don't know if we need to have a motion to extend that time. It sounds like we had quite a few cards.
We have 17 right now.
Okay. And if, if you signed up for a card and had a question and your question was answered, it's, you, that's okay. You don't need to still come up, but we'll, so I guess we'll need to have a motion to extend the public participation time.
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Macavina?
Yes.
Mrs. Opescar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
All right. Yes. Sorry. Yes, sorry.
Motion carries.
All right. Dr. DeBil will read them as they come up.
Our first speaker is Jonathan Shaw.
Hi, everyone. Obviously, this is a passionate conversation for everyone. I'm just going to read because my wife wasn't able to be here today. And first off, we're both mad, but we voted yes. but we voted yes. We understand that there's financial decisions that need to be made to keep things in the black. I'm a parent of a high school swimmer and an upcoming high school swimmer and soccer player. Upset, the swim team will be dropped and dive team next year, along with the other teams, such as golf, hockey, gymnastics, diving, et cetera, because they don't have a home playing field. I feel that this is a reactive decision, maybe not well thought out, pre-planned. I also have a junior who's losing his opportunity to participate in probably his only varsity sport his senior year. I think if we look back four years ago, COVID knocked all the seniors out of that, and we saw what impact that had on those seniors and how they reacted after that. Some of it was tragic. But we also feel he might lose some of his pride and his passion for Avon Lake. I know there's people in this room that graduated from this school and moved back to this community, and some say, I might not have my kid. Tell them we're coming back to this community. And how sad is that? 26 years ago, I moved from Amherst to here, basically because Avon Lake had one of the best school systems besides Amherst, and I wanted to be a little closer to Cleveland. And I had a history here at this pool. And I'm sure, Joelle, you and me, we're understand that the summer swim team has about 250 age-group swimmers every summer that come through that program. And some of them were state champions last year. They're going on their SWC fifth championship for the boys' team, and the girls are growing. Let me get back to this. I got off track. We have a fear, my wife and I, that some of these kids might not want to come back to Avon Lake and seeing their alma mater with pride in their hearts. This not only affects the students, but the surrounding communities will notice, and also universities and colleges and students are already talking. Many of my patients that I see on a daily basis are like, Avon Lake didn't pass their levy? What happened? Now I have to respond to this as a health professional. Why did what they consider a thriving community not support their community? As they'll ask, what school did you graduate, some of these colleges? Well, I attended Avon Lake. They cut my sport, so that's why you don't see it on my college application. These universities, colleges will take notice. Families will lose faith in Avon Lake, some of their kids to other schools. Dr. DeBil, you hit the thing right on the button with those stats earlier. High school students may not choose to come back to settle in Avon Lake. The legacy may be lost. It was called Avon Lake Legacy. A legacy is built by relationships, not just buildings. It's the legacy of commuting that pride and transitioning it to the next generation, not just what classroom they're sitting in. Avon Lake's done a great job with old buildings. It's a heart of those teachers that make this school system what it is, not just the buildings. Some things that could be done, can we decrease the amount of coaches for every team? We feel that the responsibility of extracurricular activities should go across the board and not just these five sports, affecting these, whatever the number is, how many athletes, 150, 200?
Okay, thank you.
Every sport should take a cut to take part of the responsibility.
Our next, our next speaker is Jennifer Tysel.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Tysel, and I'm a 1988 Avon Lake graduate. I'm a swimmer and also a parent of a past, present, and future swimmer here at Avon Lake High School. To say that I'm disappointed in the failing of the levy is an understatement, as well as the disappointment of the sport continuing to move forward and cutting the sports with one, with one in particular, and obviously most important to me and my family, swimming and diving. For many of our kids, our students, they are considered a one-sport student athlete, and swimming and diving, or even hockey, or golf, might be all that they have to participate in. Because let's face it, even though Avon Lake is historically known to be a big football town, not everyone plays football. So why our sport? Why were any of these sports singled out in a proposal of the failing levy? Why wasn't there a consideration of cutting costs to all Avon Lake sports across the board? Why choose and punish these sports and these student athletes that don't have the luxury of having a facility on this campus? I ask the question, why? This swim program, this family, starts in the Avon Lake community with our summer rec swim team, the Avon Lake Storm, the future of Avon Lake's high school swim and dive teams. Over the years, they have won multiple championships, much like our own high school team. Avon Lake High School's swimming and diving program has won the school, our school, many SWC conferences for both boys' and the girls' teams. This program has had strong representation at CSU sectionals, districts which are held at Bowling Green State University as well. This program has sent swimmers and divers to states and have had many go on to swim and earn scholarships to their respective college and/or university. This program has earned our own Avon Lake Coaches Awards that are voted on by the conference and their peers over the years, multiple times, I might add. So as you can see, this program, this family, if you will, is such a positive and successful one. So I ask you all the question, why? Why is such a successful program, year after year, with a consistent roster of 45 to 50 student athletes being cut from Avon Lake's sports? Obviously, I'm biased to swimming, but the same argument goes for all the other sports that are singled out as well. I thank you for your time.
Thanks. Our next speaker is Beth Wallace.
You may need to say that again.
Our next speaker is Beth Wallace.
Thank you for your time. I stand before you today, representing myself, my children, and many parents affected by the proposed decision to eliminate five varsity athletic programs. We are asking for your collaboration moving forward. As parents of hockey players, we are not just concerned with the loss of these programs. For many kids, sports are where they find their confidence and their sense of belonging. They learn resistance and teamwork and leadership in ways that no classroom can replicate. For some of our students, these sports offer opportunities, turn scholarships. But for other student athletes who aren't always the best students, they don't love school, they find their connection, their purpose, their friends, in their sport. It's a sport that provides the motivation not found in the school environment. Yet, when their particular sport is so easily cast aside, it equates to casting them aside. This decision isn't just about budgets. It's about whether we value the holistic development of our children, or whether we're willing to sacrifice their growth for short-term financial decisions. In this particular situation, we're telling specific kids that their hard work doesn't matter. Their passions are expendable, and that student athlete, other student athletes, matter more. I understand the challenges we face as a district, and I know that tough decisions must be made. But I ask you to remember this. The strength of our community isn't built on our buildings. It's built on our youth. The mission of the Avon Lake Schools is to be a district committed to personalized educational excellence, to challenge all students and develop their individual goals. Yet, now the district is telling kids that they will only continue to help develop goals for certain students who participate in the most mainstream sports. Those sports are not without costs either. What message does it send to our kids that you are targeting some programs and not others? Cuts can make parents uncomfortable. They eliminate the fringe benefits. However, the elimination of continually successful varsity athletic programs should be a last resort. Financial cuts should take a top-down approach. All individuals starting at the very top asked to tighten their belts. As Joelle said, every little bit helps. Cuts directly impacting youth should be the very last resort. It's hard to believe we've exhausted all the options for balancing the district's budget, especially when teams are willing and able to collaborate with the district to achieve financial goals. If you must target athletics, a fair, equitable, and unilateral approach should be considered. Instead, you chose to put up two issues in the wake of tax evaluations and then punish specific athletes for the lack of community support. It makes me wonder, if you had threatened to cut football, would the result be the same? As many of us, as many of us are here to, as many of us are here today, see, our kids are innocent victims in this scenario. We urge the board to please reconsider. Please find a way to work with these programs to achieve the necessary goals. You went for the jugular in your reduction options, and the only thing you killed is the spirit of these student athletes in the varsity athletic programs.
Thank you.
We, you, the leadership, owe it to them to do better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have two kids that have graduated from Avon Lake High School and one that is a freshman this year. They've all been very successful, and I'm the first one to brag about the amazing schools and teachers we have in Avon Lake. When people decide to move to Avon Lake, the number-one reason is usually the school system. And if it's not the number-one reason, then it's number-two. I wanted to take a moment to address the failure of the recent school levies, issue 15 and 16. In my 20 years of living in Avon Lake, this community has always supported the local schools. Prior to this year and last year's school levy's failing, I cannot remember a previous levy that did not pass. I believe it was a mistake to tie issue 15 and issue 16 together for this year's vote. Although they were individual levies, it was marketed as a package deal, and I think that caused some confusion. I have heard that many people thought it was all-or-nothing vote. Either you vote yes on both, or you vote no on both. I truly believe that if issue 16 was separated and clearly explained that it was for the current budget shortfall, and it would directly benefit the teachers and currents through the body, issue 16 would have passed. I definitely agree that we need new facilities in Avon Lake. Everyone knows, it was an extremely large tax increase and an extremely long period of time. 37 years is a very long time. The high prices of inflation and the, we have endured as a result of the pandemic was no help. People have not been able to save money like the pre-pandemic times. And I'm no expert on politics of school funding, but I would like to see a stronger effort, if possible, to get partial funding from the state and/or federal level. Regarding the energy, the emergency operating levy, in an effort to save jobs and student, I would like to propose that we have a special election in May for issue 16. The purpose of this levy, clearly stated, I'm confident it would pass. The community has done it for. Thanks for your time.
Our next speaker is Megan Delashrek.
I was not quite ready for this. Okay. So I'm here to discuss something that Joelle has already touched on, but the potential elimination of the kindergarten program and full-day kindergarten. As a mom that stands on the playground every day, this is kind of some feedback that I've heard from parents, including other moms, like, they're concerned with the district moving forward. So one of the things that we've found is, sorry, I'm very shaky right now, knowing information prior to February 1st. If January 28th is our typical registration time, that does not give both teachers, who may be losing their positions, or parents looking for other options, enough time to make decisions. It's not fair, and everybody is in a state of turmoil right now, trying to figure out what their next step is. I know, Joelle, that you did touch on the option of increasing fees and that $6,000 cost point. I would like to know how many students are enrolled currently as full-day and how many are part-time. By the stats that Jack DeBil put up there, we have 208 kindergarteners currently enrolled. Even if we matched other districts that are similar to ours in enrollment costs of being 3,500 to 3,800, I feel like there is adequate opportunity to make up some of that difference that we would then lose if we eliminate that program altogether, also eliminating positions of some of these amazing kindergarten teachers that we have in our district. One of the things that I got from our kindergarten meeting was that kindergarten is to prepare our students for the standardized tests that are across the state standards. And if we drop to half-day, how will this impact these students? The next impacted class that will be going into these changes are our children that were born during a pandemic. They already suffered at the hands of having to have less social interaction, whether it was daycare or schools, or with other teachers and other students. And now we're about to take away an opportunity from them to be able to grow more within our district and in our community. And yet, with the ed choice, how many students have we already lost, and how many more will we lose to the elimination of the kindergarten program? I know there's wait lists in other places, along with daycares, including St. Joe's and St. Raff's, which leaves our students, our families, our lower-income families, in a situation that they have no opportunity to provide a quality education for their children by eliminating this program. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kristen Westerberg.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kristen Westerberg. I have an eight-year-old, second grade at, at Ear Review. And it's been emotional to see my kid cry, because he knows he's going to have to go to a different school, one that he feels safe in. He knows all his friends. He knows all his teachers. He's growing. He's... You know, I left my phone in my car, and I had all these things that I wanted to say. So I am kind of going rogue here, but I'm just, I want to say a few things about Ear Review and the school that it is. And I just want to, I don't fully understand why. It's just Ear Review that is being considered for this closure. Yes, I understand it is the smallest, and I fully understand the operating costs and the maintenance costs and everything. But there's some amazing things about Ear Review, not just with the teachers. Every school's amazing. All these teachers are amazing. You can say something about Westview, Eastview, Redwood, all of them are, are wonderful, wonderful schools. But Ear Review has a lot of things going for them, and just the location alone, you know, for, removing busing. Think about the benefits that Ear Review has, having the dual sides there, the lake road and the electric access points to be able to pick up and drop off. It'll be less congestion. You know, field trips are being taken away from these kids as well. Ear Review is in a wonderful location where these kids can get out more often. They can go over to the library. They can go over to cop preservation. They can use the facilities at the high school. This is at no additional cost to the school or anything. It's, it's a wonderful school. Kids in the community, that program alone, very similar to Westview's program, we raised, and help me, PTA moms here, just this week, more than, was it more than the, what was it?
4,300.
4,300, yeah, for our food drive, which exceeds, you know, more than we've ever done in the past. We are involved in the community. We do things every month for this community. And I just, you know, I hope it's, you know, you consider, you know, other options besides just eliminating Ear Review.
Our next speaker is Brenda Crackus-Jones.
So I'm standing here as a six-year-old girl, as your employee, taking a huge risk, standing in front of my bosses, and also as a kindergarten teacher and a veteran teacher of 33 years. I was raised in Avon Lake. My parents brought me here as a two-year-old, and they taught me to fight, fight when you believe in something, fight against evil and do what's right. And I need to let the board know that although this may be a part-time job for you, you have to understand that these are people, these are children. In my class, these are moms, these are fathers, these are grandparents. You need to remember your why. Why did you become a born number? It wasn't to sit and say you had a part-time job. You're affecting the entire community. I've watched people on Parents of Avon Lake belittle each other. You are destroying us. You need to put your heart and soul into what you're doing. The community of these schools is a family. We are a family, and we deserve not to break up that family. I'm teaching in my first-grade classroom. As I shared with Joelle, who was where I was little, but hadn't, and my best friend was so mad at me because I had red hair. But this isn't just buildings. This isn't just a budget. These are people, and our district has always put children first. What are you doing now? It's easy to look at numbers. It's easy to look at a structure, but that structure has a heart and a soul. And these people over here... And these people over here who are risking themselves to stand in front of you, your employee who is standing right here in front of you, I need you to put your heart and your soul in there. That means on Wednesday after the election, when no one showed up to Ear Review to say I'm sorry, it hurt every ounce of me and my colleagues. Every single day I walk in, and people are crying, and I have to hold them and tell them that it's okay. But I need you to know we're not okay. Avon Lake's not okay. Ear Review's not okay, okay? And none of these families in all of our four elementary buildings are okay. It is your job, it's not a half-time, part-time job. It is your heart that you need to put into this.
Thanks, Brenda. Our next speaker is Kate Lanzar.
So, I'm a little emotional after hearing Brenda Jones speak. I have a whole speech on my phone, but I think I'm gonna go rogue, because I just have a lot of things from this meeting that I'd like to bring up and talk about in under two minutes and 43 seconds. So, first of all, building off of what Brenda just discussed, Wednesday, after the election, waking up in my household was rough, as it was for many of these families. And I have a first grader at Ear Review, also in board, along with many of these women out here today. And the first words out of my six-year-old's mouth was, "Mommy, is my school closing?" And I said, "Probably, buddy, probably." And then we all cried, and I rocked him that morning, and he's, I use the word "special needs" lightly, but like loosely on the spectrum, he feels things really hard. It's not like him to be so emotional about a topic, and he was inconsolable that morning. But the discussion that I had with him is the point, and it was, "Buddy, it's okay to be sad, and it's okay to be mad." And those are really valid feelings this morning, and mommy has the same feelings. But mommy has a lot of really good friends, and you have really good teachers, and we are gonna fight really hard to make sure that this is okay for you and your friends. And just because you're sad and you're mad doesn't mean that you don't get to be kind and you don't get to be brave. You have to be brave. So, I implore all of you sitting up here to be brave. Face the community. Figure out what you have to do to get this figured out. You have heard from lovely people tonight about what Ear Review offers this community. There are other options. There have to be other options. I don't want to take away from others that are gonna speak tonight, but perhaps other building configurations that could be, could be done to save more money, to save Ear Review. These community schools are Avon Lake. I moved here three years ago. I grew up outside, I grafted, I went to Midview, moved away, came back here specifically for the schools, as many here have said tonight. And to now be facing this situation, I can't believe that I'm standing here today doing this, and I have been a staunch supporter of this. I went door-to-door. I tried, I wrote letters, I showed up at every event to try to talk to people. I've come to board meetings. There are people that truly care in this community, and it's those people you need to find. And, and you have to go find the naysayers, figure out a way to go. I don't know if it's door-to-door, I don't know what it is, but like you have to find the people and see what it is that they need, you know? Will a levy, would that help keep Ear Review's doors open? Maybe? I don't know. Can it? Hopefully, because these people in the back of their room that see our students every day deserve a fighting chance to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrew McCormick.
So, while the failure of the bond and emergency levy is deeply concerning, we need to take a hard look at why this package continues. This is the third time the district has struggled to secure the community's support, and the consequences for our children and our schools are severe. It's clear that your approach to engaging the voters and presenting these measures has not resonated. The strategy has repeatedly failed, leaving us without the critical resources our schools need. This is not the fault of the voting taxpayer, but a failure of leadership to communicate effectively and build trust. I urge this governing body to take responsibility for the outcome and consider new strategies for engaging the community. If you are incapable of leading this effort successfully, then it's time for new leadership to step in, either through voluntary resignations or a special election. Our students deserve leaders who can unify and inspire the community to prioritize their education. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Gerald Phillips.
Obviously, the most urgent issue before this board tonight is obviously the failure of the tax levy and the repercussions. I have a number of comments concerning that, but I'm gonna defer that to the next board meeting, because my intention was to talk about something that may not be as pressing, but will affect the future revenues of the school district. It's gonna come before you sooner than you think. It's a concept called tax increment financing. And what that is, in a normal situation, a developer who does development will put in the infrastructures, the roads, the streets, the sewers, and the improvements at their cost, and then as that development is developed, the future tax revenues will then go to the school district. But under a TIF, it's different, and the TIF has to be approved by our city council. And underneath a TIF, what happens is those future tax revenues that would come from that development will be diverted to pay for those public improvements, the streets, the roads, and any other items. So, what happens in the TIF, the money that would go to the school district is diverted to pay bonds, which the developer gets financing for, and those bonds are secured by the future tax revenues from that development. The city's not on the line, but that money is diverted to pay for those bonds. So, the school district will not get that money. In a normal situation, the developer will pay for the improvements and pay for the taxes, but in the TIF, they don't pay for the development, but the taxes they pay go to pay the bonds. So, the school board has some authority on it. I gave you a handout. There's a very good graph that shows what happens on a TIF. The green is the base land, baseline taxes that you'll get. After the TIF period is the green, you'll get that. The orange is the revenue that will be lost. City council has approved an interim development agreement, and AL ERG wants out of that TIF 15 million to go for a park, for the city, 15 million to go to the improvements for that park. And city council says, "Well, that's great, because we don't have to pay for it." But the problem is, they're robbing Peter to pay Paul. They're taking money from the city, they're taking money from you and giving it to the city. So, I hope you read my information, and I will speak future on this, and I hope residents go to the city council meetings and fully understand, because that affects the future funding of this school district, which everybody in this room wants to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pam Riggs.
I graduated from Avon Lake High School, so I've been here on and off a long time. I've also been a substitute teacher in many different areas, and I've seen schools come and go, get rid of schools, bring schools back, and all that stuff. And what I want to say is basically that the safety for the kids is number one. And I was looking at the proposal of moving everything to Eastview. With Eastview, if you haven't done your study on traffic pattern, right now the traffic on Learwood, or on Lear Road, is really bad. My aunt lives there, and she says, "It's a shortcut for everybody to go down to 90", you know, from Bay or from Avon Lake. You know, a lot of people, if they're going to Cleveland, that's your shortcut. And it will develop more problems with all the parents bringing their children to school there. I mean, if you're gonna have limited busing, you've got Learwood and Eastview, and you have one way in and out. There's no other way. Now, with Ear Review, they have a really nice system. They have the roundabout in the front, basically for the buses, and in the back, all the parents come in and pick up the kids. And also, they use the library, and they use the church. Because my backyard goes into the Ear Review, I've watched it over the years, I've seen what wonderful things they do. When they have programs, there's not a place to park. And with them just redoing, well, adding 20-some years ago, an addition onto the Ear Review, I mean, as a taxpayer, you know, that was like wasting money, you know? You spent all this money on one of the newest additions, and now you want to say, "Oh, well, we're gonna close it." I look at it, because I work in engineering, I've worked in companies where I had to sit there and reconfigure machineries and stuff like that, and I said, "There is a way to work on it. You can save your buildings, you can cut costs, but the problem is, you have to find the people to do it." Just because our zip code is 441, or 012, people are like, "Oh, they all got all the money." And I'm like, "No, we don't. We have to go out and investigate." And my one thing is, is with the schools, can they develop a program where these companies that are here, that may have tax abatement, so they don't have to pay any taxes, and ask them to sponsor a school, a program in the school? That way, they can write it off, and you guys can get the benefits up. If you need something, you need a new furnace, fine, ask a company, or a few of them, say, "Hey, can you pull together and do this?" And have a wall saying, oh, I'm sorry, and have a wall saying, "This was done by such-and-such company." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Natasha Beridge.
I have three children here in the district, one at Learwood, one at Troy, and I have a special-needs child that goes to Leaps currently, who would have been joining Ear Review as an incoming kindergartner. Firstly, I want to thank Kendra personally for being present at the Ear Review PTA meeting this month, for speaking up today as a parent, and for saying that she'll keep her calendar free. It very much feels like Kendra is a mom, a member of our Avon Lake family, and not an unreachable board member. This transparency and explicit openness to offer to do whatever is needed to move forward proactively and with deep passion and thought has impacted many of us tonight, and we explore all of the members of the board to take up the challenge and make a similar commitment. So, thank you, Kendra. My main point was on kindergarten. Obviously, as I said, I have a child that should be incoming kindergartner. Whilst I recognize the intent was not to impact families who could not afford the increased fees, this may result in the district losing available funds to private schools in the area that do provide a fee-paying full kindergarten. Many of these schools have set their fees at $6,166, which, as you'll have seen earlier, is the exact amount for the full ed choice scholarship, if you qualify for the full amount. So, therefore, very achievable for most of us. In addition to this, those of us who choose to send our children to private school for full-day kindergarten will likely to continue to educate that child at that school, which means not only a loss of enrollment for one year, but for the entirety of that child's 12-year educational journey. On top of that, many of those that have an incoming kindergartner may remove our older children, too. You continue to reference that these decisions that you guys have to make are for the long term and require a multiple-year impact, so please consider the impact of removing a part-time kindergarten. It may not just affect one child for a few hours this year, but multiple children for their whole education and beyond. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Morgan Smith, Sarah Mancuso, and Kelly Hughes.
Hi. Welcome to the people here. This is our first...
I'm sorry, can you, we're recording the meeting, so you have to speak in the microphone.
Sure. Hi, everybody. Like many people here today, this is our first time attending one of these events. We weren't really sure how the comment cards worked, but we did have several very serious concerns that were addressed previously in your open comment session. So, we'd like to withdraw number 13 and 14 from the comment card selection.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joy Presley.
So, in case some of you don't know, I am the current high school swim coach here at Avon Lake, one of three. So, I'm here today mostly to say, first of all, I am concerned that as swimming is being one of the sports that are being cut, that as a coach, we have not at all been approached about our thoughts, or our feelings, or our opinions, or even a solution as to how we might be able to keep that sport active. So, for us, that's a difficult position to be in when you're cutting our sport, and we have no input in that whatsoever. I think we could come up with some good ideas and some good options for keeping the sport. So, the first thing I want to do is invite all of you to Oberlin College on Friday night. We have our first Golden Maroon Swim Meet, and not that it's gonna change your minds about what you have to cut, but you need to see firsthand how hard these kids work, the effort they put in, the friendships they have made, the families, the camaraderie, and the respect they have for each other and for their sport. I've been doing this, if I add, when I started swimming, 47 years I've been involved in swimming in some way, whether I was swimming, whether I'm coaching. I own my own business, coaching swimming, so I'm passionate about it. And I think that all of you need to see the passion that those kids put into every single day. Everybody stops by a football game, everybody stops by a basketball game. I don't think anybody knows the effort and the hard work that the kids have to put into swimming, and it feels wrong that it's on a piece of paper that says, "We cost you a rental fee," and you can cross us off the list without thinking about what that means to those kids, what it means to the coaches, and that we haven't thought of other options. And I think if we looked around, if we looked at the swimming parents that are here tonight, we could probably give you 10 ways that we think we could save the sport and cut costs and not have to cut the sport completely. So, if you're available and you want to come by a swim practice, or you want to come by the meet, please do. But more importantly, I really wish you'd reach out to myself and the other coaches and sit down and have a conversation about how we can save the sport. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kim Yurig.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Kim Yurig, and I live in Avon Lake with my husband. The recent failure of the proposed levy and bond issue brings to light a concern that many of us share. Why aren't our schools receiving the funding they need? It's troubling to see public schools losing vital resources to the Choice Plus program. You've heard the numbers, and it's unsettling. When combined with the inherent challenges posed by unconstitutional state-level funding, it is increasingly difficult for our public schools to thrive. This situation forces districts to turn to local taxpayers, and we all feel the weight of that responsibility. I'm advocating for a collaborative solution by joining nearly 150 Ohio public school districts in the Vouchers Hurt Ohio Coalition in the Vouchers Hurt Ohio Coalition to address the challenges of the state's Choice Plus voucher program. This is not just a fight for funding. It's a fight for the future of public education. We must recognize that out-of-state interests with their own agendas are influencing our education system in ways that don't always prioritize our students' needs. Let's consider the financial implications. The voucher program diverts essential funds from our public schools. These funds are necessary to maintain smaller class sizes, support vital programs, and retain our skilled educators. Without these resources, we risk creating an environmental environment, an educational environment that does not meet the needs of our students and even leads to the closure of schools, like Earerview. Next, let's consider the principle of fairness. Public funds should be directed toward public institutions that are accountable to our community. Private schools, while they serve some students well, do not have the same obligation to serve all children, creating an uneven playing field. Third, we must consider the legal aspect. The Coalition contends that the Choice Plus voucher program is unconstitutional. Public funds should not be used to support private education, particularly when it includes religious institutions. Lastly, let's think about the impact on our community. Joining this Coalition sends a heartfelt message that Avon Lake is committed to protecting our public schools. It demonstrates that we value equitable access to quality education for all children, benefiting not just today's students, but also future generations. In conclusion, aligning with vouchershurtohio.org is a significant step toward ensuring that public education in Avon Lake remains strong, fair, and adequately funded. I urge the board to consider the long-term benefits of joining this Coalition. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Molly. And Molly, can you state your last name for the record for Mrs. Reed?
Does this ring on?
Yep.
My daughter always does it, sorry. And my husband probably would crush on you, because you're very good at what you do. I just want to let you know that I didn't come here for a certain reason. I came here because my kids went through Earerview. And they are so productive and such amazing children, and I am so proud of them. And our daughter's now at Dayton, and our son is in Avon Lake School System. And there's something very special about Earerview, and the teachers are phenomenal. And I see all the teachers here tonight. And I'm just so proud of what they have done for my children. And I think that is something that you can... My parents are both Cleveland schoolteachers. My godparents are New York schoolteachers. I come from teachers. I respect teachers beyond. And I just really think that you should rethink a lot of things that you guys are doing. And I really think you should think about it before you do anything in excess. Go hockey and swimming!
Our next speaker is Rob Shamir.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Rob Shamir. I've got two children in the school system, a senior and a fifth grader. And effectively, my concern primarily is, you know, my son, who is in fifth grade, is not going to have the same opportunities that my daughter has. My daughter is on the swim team, and I don't think, based on what I hear, that my son is ever going to get on that team. So my issue with the swim issue, I support everything that was said. However, I have another issue that I want to discuss, and that's school funding. You know, everybody talks about the levy and the requirements for funds. The other thing that we need to understand is where that fund comes from. You guys are the stewards of our educational taxes and our educational programs. The city and city council and city government should be the stewards of economic growth. And this is something that needs to be discussed. You know, as a city, we have had issues. Yet, we don't have an economic development plan. We do not have a plan that shows and projects where we need to go. As a city, how do we bring in additional businesses to backfill what leaves? You know, the power plant's closing was written 10 years ago. I mean, that was, the writing was on the wall. So we should have backfilled as a city and brought in industries to fill the gap. Now, I stand here before you to thank you on what you've done to date. Now, I cannot question what you guys do when it comes to educational funding. But what I can tell you is, there needs to be more done by the city to backfill the gaps. Now, when the issue of the TIF was brought up by Mr. Phillips, you know, the question is asked, how can a generational TIF impact the school system? Well, you know, when you take the money out of circulation into the schools and put it towards development, you know, that is not something that is going to positively impact educational growth. So what I would request is for you guys to really look at the TIF as it comes forth to you. Look at what the impact will be on the bottom line. Because at the end of the day, if that impact is great enough, then it's not worth it. What needs to happen is an economic growth and development based on an equal growth for the school system. Because this is the foundation of our community. This is why we came here. This is why the rest of the people came here. So one last thing. I would recommend that everybody contact their council members and ask them where they stand on the TIF. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Gina Christ.
Hi, my name is Gina Christ. I am an 11-year resident, and I have four boys in the Avon Lake City Schools. I have two third graders and a fourth grader at Earerview and a sixth grader at Troy. What I would like to ask of the board tonight is, as you discuss and consider reducing the footprint of the schools that you guys run, to consider a situation where you implement the K through 5 and 6 through 8 structure this coming year. And instead of closing Earerview, consider closing Learwood. Taking this approach would cause the least upheaval for our young Avon Lake students. They're at an age where they have the least agency in their lives. And their friendships, as Kendra mentioned, their friendships within their schools, their relationships with their teachers, their relationship with the school as they go through K, first, second, oh, which teacher am I going to get for third this year? Who do you get? Like, the magic that happens at the elementary level and the beautiful thing of Avon Lake having these neighborhood elementary schools where this student body grows together is worth considering a plan that could allow that to be protected and remain. A plan like this would eliminate the need for redistricting. We would not be upheavaling the lives of all of our elementary school students, breaking friendships. This would also, um... So basically, with this approach, we would have our fifth graders, next year's fifth graders would stay at the elementary school they're already at. This, next year's sixth and seventh graders would stay at Troy, which they know. And next year's eighth graders would return to Troy, which is a building they already know well. And with the discussion of eliminating middle-school teaming, my hope that it is possible to consider having sixth, seventh, and eighth exist at Troy and then continuing with our four elementary schools and saving Earerview. Thank you.
And our last speaker this evening is Michelle Witten, and I hope I'm pronouncing that right.
Yeah.
All right. No.
Do I talk like this?
Yeah. So you're addressing the board.
Well, I'm going to talk to the audience. Um, so my name is Michelle Witten. Um, I am a committee member on Avon Lake Citizens for Schools. So we're the group who put the yard signs out. We're the ones who, the flyers, all of that good stuff. Um, so the school needs money. We all know that. The cuts suck. We don't want cuts. I got two little kids. One is going to be in kindergarten next year. She wants to go to full-day kindergarten. Might not be an option. I got a son who's in second grade at Westview. We love Westview. He wants to play hockey someday. Maybe hockey won't be an option for him. All of this is not great, but the need is going to be there, no matter what. We need, the district needs money. Like, they told us this time and time again. So whether they ask in May if you guys feel like that's the right thing to do, or they ask at another point in time, what I'm asking all of you is that we need your help. We need your help. And to those of you in the audience who volunteered and did help us this election cycle, thank you. Thank you for knocking on doors. Thank you for the text campaigns. Thank you for the call banks. Thank you for everything that you did. We're so grateful. But in order to get the word out, we need more support. We need help from everyone in the community to educate the community. Because we're a small committee. We did the best with what we had. I'm the CEO of a marketing company. I like to think that I know how to sell stuff to people or to at least explain things to people. I felt like we did a great job of that. It wasn't enough. So if and when the board does decide to ask again, I hope you'll join us and help us to spread the word about why this is such a critical need and why it's not going away. So avonlakesitizensforschools.org tomorrow, there's a splash page up right now. Tomorrow, there will be volunteer sign-up on that page. If you want to help us, and I encourage you to do it, please, please register your name and email so that when the board does come out with something and they need a support for a campaign, you can help us. We would really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we're going to be moving on to the business portion of our meeting. And we have a number of items to get to. I understand a lot of folks want to come for the public comment. You're welcome to stay. If you want to get up and leave, that's okay as well. But we'll start with the treasurer's consent items.
Your approval is...
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped something.
Can you just wait until...
Sure. I'm going to give a second for the room to clear out a little bit. All right, as we move back into our meeting, the first item is our approval and signing of the minutes for October. We only had one meeting. I don't believe there's any issues with those minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the October 15th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Stovey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now we'll move on to the treasurer's consent items.
I would appreciate if the board would consider approving the treasurer's consent items, which do include a lot of normal business for this time of year. We have our monthly reports, as well as some advances, or I apologize, transfers this month. We also have the amendment of appropriations, our then-announced certificates. We need to increase our drag-and-fly petty cash account to process additional athletic officials and game worker payments. We also have added our cyber insurance to the consent agenda this year to ensure that we're covered appropriately for cyber attacks. And unfortunately, in this day and age, we've seen some neighboring districts be hit. So this is something that, you know, we need to ensure that we have in place at the appropriate level. We also have an agreement to approve registration agreement with TurnItIn. We have the, and that would be all of my treasurer's consent items for tonight.
Pretty short list. Does anyone have any questions for Autumn? Okay, I have a motion to approve the treasurer's consent items.
So approve.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stovey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, Autumn.
We do have a separate treasurer's consent item today. Kendra does work for UH Hospitals, so we needed to ensure there was no conflict of interest there. So we have the approval of a contract with UH Physician Services, doing business as UH Occupational Health. And this is just to support the hepatitis B vaccination that the district would provide to any employee who would be interested.
And this is an item that has been on agenda every year past recently?
Uh, Dr. Lavre, is this a different vendor? Do you know? The Hep B?
The physicals, the TA physicals?
Yep.
Yes, we're making a slight change in that request.
So anytime we have someone who, whether it be related to you or whatnot, we move that item agenda separately so we can vote on it without that person. So when we go through this, Kendra will note her conflict there by abstaining. So I have a motion to approve this agenda item for University Hospitals.
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
I recuse my vote.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Stovey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Abstain. Thank you. I can find the word, abstain. Thank you.
All right, next up is our five-year forecast update.
So first, I'd like to apologize for my voice and my cough. I've been battling a cold the last couple weeks. So I am going to stand here close to my hot tea just in case I start to cough and can't stop. So our five-year forecast is something that we approve. By law, we have to approve the five-year forecast twice a year. The board has to approve a forecast and have it submitted by the end of November and the end of May to the Ohio Department of Education and workforce. So some of the methodology that goes into our five-year forecast, it reflects only our general fund. So we have a food service fund. We have a bond retirement fund, a permanent improvement fund. The general fund represents our operational dollars. So that is what is encompassed within our five-year forecast. The forecast is prepared based on historical trend, as well as any current factors that we have going on currently. At any time, variables can change. So our five-year forecast is truly just a snapshot at that point in time when it is prepared. If any variables change and they're material, the board always has the right to update their five-year forecast and submit a revised forecast to the Ohio Department of Education and workforce. The intent is to provide the district's financial trend over time and to be a roadmap for decisions that are aimed at encouraging our financial sustainability, as well as stability. Excuse me. So if, our five-year forecast is actually a document that will be available on our website tomorrow, and it will also be added to the agenda if you want to view the entire five-year forecast, which contains details about every line item within our five-year forecast. This right here is a simplified version of our forecast. We look at our beginning cash, if there's any revenue, expenses, and then where does that leave us at the end of the year? So if you look at the financial statement for this current five-year period, and you look at the gold rectangle that's outlined here, revenue surplus or deficit without levies. What that means is, are we spending more than what we're bringing in? And you can see that by fiscal '29, which is the last year of the forecast, we will be deficit-spending almost $4.1 million. So our ending cash balances without an operating levy, by fiscal '29, we're in the red. without an operating levy, by fiscal '29, we're in the red. As you heard Joelle mention earlier, we're not allowed to be in the red. We don't, we can't be in the red. So we have to look at how we're doing business today, and what is going to change our forecast in a material way to ensure that we resolve having a negative cash balance by the end of this forecast. So as Joelle mentioned earlier, our monthly operating expenses, just looking at fiscal '25, is about $4.5 million per month. So as we look at, as a school district, having 60 days cash on hand for us is about $9 million. That would mean we would need to end our fiscal year with $9 million. You can see, looking at the numbers, we're going to end fiscal '25 with this current version of the forecast with just shy of $8 million. We don't even have 60 days cash in the bank when we close this fiscal year. So again, the forecast will be available tomorrow with all the details about each individual line item within our revenue and our expenses within our five-year forecast. But just giving a very high-level overview of our revenue, we are heavily local-funded, as you heard here tonight. So from a local tax standpoint, we receive about 71% of our taxes from real estate, a little over 7% of our taxes from public utility, personal property tax. And even though the power plant no longer exists, we do have three other large taxpayers that are mentioned in our five-year forecast that are a part of this category. So when you look at our, our revenue overall, and you look at fiscal '25, we will see increased revenue, as we discussed this last year, excuse me, and as we projected last May. Our forecast currently does not look that different than it did this last May. Reappraisal for us yields some additional revenue that's due to inside millage, that's due to the school district currently being, from a residential side of things, our Class I property taxpayers at what's called the 20-mill floor. That, we also have new construction growth that's still occurring here in Avon Lake. So the first year of that new construction growth, we're able to capture that increase. And then it gets folded into all of the reduction factors that take place with tax rates. So I do mention our 20-mill floor and described it briefly here, and what is the importance of that. So the state has a minimum millage threshold that's referred to as the 20-mill floor. And our fixed-rate levies, which are our millage-driven levies, those levies are adjusted downward as our property values rise. And the reason for that is taxpayers then do not pay more than they voted on for that levy. So that, that's a millage-driven levy, a fixed-rate levy. Now, fixed-sum levies are not subject to the millage floor. So about 42% of our revenue is, is comprised of fixed-sum levies, dollar levies, emergency levies, substitute levies, those are fixed-sum levies. And about 58% are fixed-rate levies. So currently, our state funding, again, our state funding is so low. So collectively, we get about 18% in state funding, but that's not our per-pupil funding. That $808 that Joelle talked about, that's called our base-per-pupil funding that we receive from the state. So that funding only represents about 8% of our revenue. So this next pie chart shows our base cost per pupil for fiscal '25, which is our current school year. So there's what's called the Fair School Funding Plan, that is the state's methodology for how they fund public schools. And as Jack was talking about the vouchers, I was sitting here, and, and Joelle must have, we must have been on the same wavelength talking through osmosis, because our base funding for Avon Lake that the state calculates is $8,082. Jack mentioned a voucher can be as much as $8,400. So a voucher can be $8,400, which is more than the calculated base funding that the state even provides Avon Lake schools. So out of that $8,000, Avon Lake gets $808 from the state. It costs, at a state average, about $15,500 to educate a child. So where is that difference made up? All of our public tax dollars, our Avon Lake local tax dollars, is what makes up that difference. I'm sorry?
That's, that is the state's methodology. They look at a, a district like Avon Lake, we have, they look at us as having a high property wealth val- we're a high property wealth valuation district. So our local ability to tax is greater than other communities. And that's how they, they fund all schools within the state of Ohio. This is mandated by the state. So if you're not happy about it, just like we're not happy about it, please contact your legislators, because it is outside of this Board of Education's control on how Ohio schools are funded. That is a state decision. So as we look at our expenditures...
One moment. Earlier with the voucher comment, aren't we part of this coalition? I mean, I get emails about this voucher program all the time. And I know, like, during public participation, we're really just trying to digest what's coming at us. But I'm assuming you're at tables where we're talking about these things. I mean, I get, like, five emails a day on the voucher program.
So the, our board is not part of, an official part of the coalition. It has a fee tied to it. And the coalition charges a fee per student. So it's based on your, what your ADM is. And so we have not joined, obviously, it's another expense to our, but are, are we as superintendents, or is it a conversation that we are engaged with, with our legislators? Absolutely, every single day. We are not official members, because it was not going to recommend to you-
Adding a cost.
To add an additional cost.
Sorry. Thank you.
So as, as we look at our expenditures, a school district is a service-oriented business. So the majority of our costs are personnel-driven. So as we look at our personnel costs, we're about 77% currently, just in personnel costs, salary and benefits. So we don't have a lot of ability within those other categories. So about 17% of the other categories equal our supplies, our purchased services, and our capital outlay that is spent within the general fund. Those categories, in total, are about 23% of our expenses. And you can see, those expenses are only increasing. We have factors within our five-year forecast, again, within the details. It's, it's a packet this big. Each line item of the five-year forecast is explained in great detail. I'm just providing you a, a general overview tonight.
And you'll post that tomorrow, right?
Yes. It'll be posted tomorrow. It'll be posted under the Treasurers' page. And there'll be a link for not just the five-year forecast, but within that five-year forecast link will also be the presentation tonight, that will have all of these numbers. Excuse me. So our next chart is just that, that line graph that shows our expenditures outpace our revenue coming in. And we will continue to deficit spend each year of this forecast without additional revenue, or reductions in our expenditure, expenditures. So as I mentioned earlier, our days cash on hand that we have, this shows you, just from a visual, last year, we had about 82 days of cash on hand. As you know, we reduced 17 positions, and that yielded the ability to be where we are this year and next year. So we are beneath 60 days cash on hand for the next two fiscal years. Currently, we're at 54 days cash on hand. And as you can see, by fiscal '29, we're in the negative. So we have to look at, how can we do business differently with what we have currently? Because again, $4.5 million a month for bills. So as we look at our cash balance, you see that decline in this chart. Expenditures are outpacing the revenue, and we do need to operate in the, in the black. So somehow, we're going to have to figure out a way to make up that negative $535,000 by fiscal '29. So where do we go from here? How do we fix that? Well, in order to meet the statutory requirement of the law, we need to submit a five-year forecast. That's why this forecast, again, doesn't vary that much from what we presented in May. This forecast will be submitted to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce to meet that deadline. However, as we work towards whatever plan we end up coming up with, we will update our five-year forecast, because that becomes that next roadmap for us to continue to make good, sound decisions for our kids. So we do need additional revenue. And, and we also, in conjunction, need to reduce our expenses. That's what we're going to continue to work on. This will help us determine what future levy options we need to look at. Because in order for the board to make an informed decision about how we proceed moving forward, they have to know what the five-year forecast looks like. So we will continue to modify this forecast as we come up with thoughts of how we can do that. Just from, for informational purposes, any additional levy that would be put on the ballot this calendar year, we do not collect that money until the next calendar year. So it doesn't matter if we go on the ballot in May, if we go on the ballot in November, if we hold a special election, those new revenues are not collected until 2026.
Autumn, on that point too, the other thing that not everyone may know, but our, as a school district, we are a June 30th year-end. So by what you just said, even if we were to pass a levy in May for some amount, whatever structure it is, we are halfway through the next operating year, which would be 2026. So that will impact those numbers, as you said.
Yes, it will.
But in doing that, though, and, I mean, because I think that's something to weigh, because it feels rushed, but say, we did the hard work now, we cleared our calendars, we took something in May, at least we would have that information in our mind's eye-
Yeah, exactly.
-to guide us. So that would be the pro of-
Yeah. Yeah, I wasn't saying that we shouldn't do it. I was saying, just to the same point, it's a, it's a cash flow. Our year, year ends don't match up with the tax collection and our, and the timing of when we start, so.
Right. And one thing, as we work down this path of what's it look like, please spread the word that the board has to preserve all of its options to meet the deadlines associated with a May election. We have to vote on things 90 days in advance, and we need an additional 30 days in advance if anything is done with a bond issue. So there's two resolutions for a purpose. Why we do that, and that's law. That's not an Avon Lake rule, that's the law. The first resolution that the board can pass is called the Resolution of Necessity. That gives me the authority to go to the county auditor and have him certify the amounts needed for whatever type of levy it is. The board would have the option, if they, if they choose to pass that Resolution of Necessity, to give me that authority. That doesn't, that's not the gospel. That doesn't mean it's going on the ballot. That just means they have preserved their right to put a levy on the May ballot. It does not become effective until, first of all, everything is filed with the Board of Elections. But there has to be a second resolution that is passed. That resolution is called the Resolution to Proceed. So by passing a Resolution of Necessity, the first resolution, that merely preserves the board's right to get on that May ballot. So that's very important as we work through this process, because we did the same thing November of '23, and it was merely to preserve our right, if the board chooses to proceed with that election.
And Autumn, the, comparing a bond, dollars raised through a bond that can only be used for construction-
Correct.
...versus dollars raised through a levy, which can be used for operating, or, or then maintaining buildings, because we can, we have to do that out of the general fund. Due to the nature of how long those two things can be, a bond can be spread out much longer, as opposed to when an operating levy is much shorter, it is still, if you're looking at dollars per 100,000, putting even a $10 million operating levy on the budget would seem more expensive, almost as expensive, oh, what we just asked for, that was voted down. So by mixing a bond and a levy together, approach of building a new building and putting some into operating money is really, you know, balancing that we can save money by the new buildings without having to raise that through higher dollars through a levy to maintain the old building. So we're balancing the community need for what they can afford versus what the school needs to continue operating. We can't just maybe just say, well, forget the buildings, we're just going to pile it all in levy, operating levy money, because that would be way too expensive for the city to ever vote on, because they just voted something like that much down.
Correct. And, you know, we received a lot of questions, even on the bond issue side of things, as we were providing those facts related to the bond issue portion of the levy this last November and then November of '23. So with, with a bond issue, the way it's structured, it is no different than your home mortgage. It can be financed for an array number of years, whatever you pick. However, just like your home mortgage, it will cost you less per month if you finance for a longer period of time. So maybe you take the 30-year mortgage over the 15, because you really can't afford that payment. So we have in the past, when it's been feasible for our taxpayers, we received some federal funding back in 2009. Out of $18.5 million, over $14 million was federal stimulus money that allowed us not to have to finance for 37 years. We financed for, I think it was just over maybe 20 years. We make these decisions very strategically. And that was palatable for our taxpayers, because the federal government offered a stimulus package, if you remember the ERA money that was out there at that point in time. There's no ERA money going on. So when we look at a bond issue, we have to look at how much can our taxpayers afford. So that's why we have to stretch that bond issue out to be repaid over a, a longer period of time. But what we do is we continue to watch the market. Just like your home, we're able to refinance our bonds if the market is favorable enough to do that. In my time here, we have done that three times. We've saved our taxpayers over $4.5 million. We would continue to do that moving forward. All of the debt we currently have on our books, with the exception of a very, very small portion, has been refinanced at least once, if not twice. So we have to take all of that into consideration when we look at a bond. An operating levy, there is more flexibility, because we're able to look and say, and certain types of levies are structured differently. An emergency levy is structured differently than a current expense levy, from a number of years standpoint. And that's all law, Ohio Revised Code-driven. But by reducing our footprint, it definitely- But by reducing our footprint, it definitely would make that operating ask be smaller.
I just, in listening to this, though, in the comments that were shared earlier, I do think, and I look forward to the working sessions where we can hash this out a bit more, I keep saying that because I'm hoping we're going to decide when we're going to do that. I know you'll let us know, Joelle. But I think we need to get consensus around, you know, there's a lot of reasons that I think this, this levy failed. I think there could have been confusion. I think it was too rich. I think we were in a, you know, we're just in a state of economy where things are tough and we're not alone in terms of districts that have, that had levies and bonds fail. I mean, like, we're living the reality. I think that's shared more macro than our own community. But I would be interested how we solicit the feedback around, you know, the appetite to try to combine things again, you know, and whether, and I know you're going to work out how we can ask those questions, but knowing that none of this really takes effect operationally until 2026 and we have two set elections, May and November, we could have a special one in August, I would just urge us to consider, you know, how we pace ourselves against thinking about these things and, you know, how we hold those truths. I don't have it, something to put forward, I think it's just more a thought in terms of how we, how we choose to kind of look at these and take the feedback that we've gotten so far.
I had two, two quick points, but they're not related. Autumn, you touched on this a little bit, but with the revaluation, every taxpayer in Avon Lake will get their tax bill soon. So they are, I think, one of the confusing points we had, we had to try to explain that with the last election. You know, this is what your impact might be from revaluation, this is from the levy. My takeaway, correct me if I'm wrong, is that it will be a little bit easier to quantify things going forward because now that we're not in a period of tax appraisal adjustment for another three years, if we, whatever levy solution we, we put on, we can get back to, like, here's what it means to you in terms of dollars without any other impact. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct. Reappraisal and, and it's just how it works. As the valuation increases, rates get reduced on certain types of levies. And it's, unfortunately, we have Class 1 taxpayers who are residential, Class 2 taxpayers who are commercial industrial. Those tax rates are different. We have public utility taxpayers, their tax rates are different. They pay the full rate, they don't pay an effective millage rate, which is that reduced rate. If you all look at your tax bill, if you escrow, take the time to go on the county auditor's website and pull up your tax bill. Where you see a tax credit, that tax credit is what we call House Bill 920. It's what keeps your taxes at the rate where the levies were voted on. You will be shocked at the tax credit that you get as a taxpayer because of that. But that credit is revenue the school district doesn't receive because we, we see very little inflationary growth unless we're at the 20 mil floor and it's only on fixed rate levies. Well, if over 40% of our revenue is a fixed sum levy, we're seeing absolutely no inflationary growth on that money, none. So it's complicated. I think the state makes it complicated, just like the per pupil funding. So nobody can really, the average person just can't open up the newspaper and go, oh, that's how schools are funded. Oh, that's how my taxes are calculated. It is not that simple.
On the other point, which doesn't necessarily dive into the five-year forecast, but we start talking about things about the equity and how Avon Lake is treated, we've really only talked about it from an operating dollar standpoint and what we get per people. But as some of you may know, the State of Ohio also gives money to certain school districts through the Ohio Facilities School Commission. I always get those letters mixed up. And in terms of how that, how those dollars are distributed, you know, they use economic factors and we are at the very bottom in terms of, we are viewed as one of the most high wealth districts. So again, when I was in Columbus, at, listen to a suburban Northeast Ohio district that put a combination levy like we did with a bond issue and an operating levy, and they had 35% of their construction costs footed by the State of Ohio. We will never get a dollar based on the way the law is right now. And can you imagine if we could take 35% out of our budget to do that? And that's, you know, unfortunately, that's the sys, the system that we're dealing with and the inequities and the fairness, and this is a suburban district, not that so diff, just similar than ours, but rated differently because of socioeconomic factors or whatever Columbus determines. So when we factor these solutions, we're, we're also, we're getting hit on both sides of the equation, whether we do buildings or whether it's operating. You know, we're ranked as a high wealth district and not receiving funding.
That's correct.
Any other questions on the five-year forecast?
What does it mean that the taxation system to fund public schools was ruled unconstitutional back, back in what year?
1990.
19, what does that mean? Will someone, like, what, what does it mean when something's ruled unconstitutional, never taken action to put it into practice? I remain so confused about this as, as a normal citizen.
I'd love to get a speeding ticket and never have to pay it, right? And that's basically the same philosophy. It was ruled unconstitutional back in 1997 stating that it is too reliable on local property taxes. And so they ruled it unconstitutional and they have not fixed it since. And there's a group of superintendents who have gotten together to try to do, it's called the Fair School Funding Model, and it's providing dollars for physicians and kids and all of that to come up with a fair funding. So, you know, depending on what your needs are, you would get fair funding, not equitable funding necessarily, but fair funding. And the state is in year four of its rollout. It was a six-year rollout, but every two years, when the state does their budget, we're all holding our breath to see if they're actually going to continue to fund it or fully fund the program. And right now, not looking like they're going to do that. Even in that new fair funding model, it still provides money for districts that are, don't have the capacity to get it locally to. Better, but not, not 100% of a fix.
And I, I can speak specifically for our district. I've been here 21 years when I was hired here. We got a little over $300 per pupil. $300. Out of, at that time, it was like 7,000. We're 21 years later and we're getting $800 per student. Not a whole lot of change, even though it's been ruled unconstitutional. The amount that a school, the amount that a school district can get does vary based on their local, their local capacity to tax. But I would say the majority of the districts are in that probably $7,000, $8,000 range of what the base cost calculation is. But what they receive varies. Joelle, is it 10%? Are there 10% of districts that are at that same level we are at that $800 mark, 10% of districts?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's districts that are, that are worse than us.
Oh, yeah.
One of my former districts may fail, they get like 200 bucks a student. It's ridiculous. So it, there are schools and it is, it's all dependent on local capacity.
But as you can tell from the Ed Choice voucher program, the state has the money. They just choose to give it to private schools and not public schools because the lobbying interests at Columbus are more powerful because they don't assume that communities like ours are going to band together, they're going to blame the school boards for the funding issue, saying, what can you do? Well, what you can do is start lobbying your state representatives and senators to get this changed.
And I would just like to add, when you place that call, because I cannot tell you how many taxpayers I talked with who were senior citizens in our community, and they, they ask me, what can the school do to help me? That's not a decision that this, or the power, we do not have that power as a school district. But I can tell you, Columbus is sitting on an awful lot of money that they could help our senior citizens. They've chosen not to. So when you talk to that legislator, make sure and bring up that point as well because our seniors can't continue to be taxed the same way they're taxed.
All right, does anyone have any other questions on the five-year forecast? I could have a motion to approve the forecast.
So, second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next item on our treasures is a resolution about transportation impractical for the 2024, 25 year.
So this is just an update, this is very normal business for us. This is an update, we do have an additional student who was added September 30th that we declared after our transportation coordinator evaluated the costs associated with transporting one student. It was declared impractical, so the board does need to vote on that item to solidify that they would get a payment in lieu of transportation payment.
This thing ties right into the prior conversation of what, what state bill requires us to bus private school children? And if we reduce busing to state minimums, we're still required to do that, correct?
We are. I don't know the exact number of the bill that requires us to bus all kids within our...
We could go find it.
We, yes, but we are required to do so by law and it's gotten a little bit tighter in the last few years that not only do we have to bus all students that are within our attendance boundaries, we have to get them there by a certain time and they can't stay after school to wait for our buses or we get fined. So we get money taken away if we don't meet the time constraints set by the schools to provide that busing. And I know they watch that like a hawk. Elyria got charged $13,000 last year for having a bus that arrived five minutes past the deadline of where, what they needed to do.
332702 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Thanks, Jack.
Thanks, Jack. Congratulations.
But we don't, we don't have to do that.
I wasn't expecting you to pull that out of thin air, but I, and I think this, I'm like, I'm so glad everybody came tonight, but sometimes they miss these most important parts of the conversation and that, to me, makes me really emotional sometimes because it's, and I'll take, I mean, I'll take the hits. I want to be accountable. I'm sitting up here to be accountable with all of you and, you know, as we do this job. I just wish more people understood what they could be doing to voice their opinion on these things. It really is damaging public schools. And to the woman in the back, I can't recall your name, I thank you for saying what you said. I appreciate you bringing that forward tonight because I don't think that enough people appreciate that and we're battling that at the same time. Get off my soapbox.
And with the, with this busing issue, it's only because even if we went to state minimum, we are still busing kids.
At the grade.
At the grade levels. Because since we don't offer any busing at the high school level, we do not have to bus kids ignatious or ed's or, or any of that.
But if we did, we have to.
But if we did, we would have to pay or bus them to those schools.
I feel like I ask that every time.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next item is the agreement with Benkei Landscape Architecture. Is this a Ned discussion?
We need to play like walk-in music for Ned when he starts way in the back.
So real quick, just before I get into the, before I get into the details of Benkei here, real quick, I got my T-8 physicals messed up with my hepatitis B vaccinations. That previous contract is not a new vendor. We re-up it every year, it's for our mandated provision of hepatitis B vaccination opportunities for employees. The T-8 physicals will be on later, but I just wanted to clarify for you.
Thank you.
So it's accurate for the record. So this, this agreement with Benkei Landscape Architecture, we've been very pleased, we've had a very smooth process with them in terms of design and construction on the tennis court project. There's another resolution on a little bit later dealing with the public library easement. They were helpful in that regard as well. This is for another athletic facility that is wearing down and needs repair. It is the Learwood Track. There are spots on the Learwood Track where the rubberized surface has worn down to the asphalt. It is rapidly becoming unsafe, not, it's, it's not unanticipated because of the age of, of the track and the project probably, you know, was done probably 20 years ago at this point, so it's time to do a project. And we'd like to work with Benkei again on this particular project to make sure that we bring that up to safety standards, which is not only used by our, our middle school students, but also St. Joe's uses that track. There are a number of community organizations that use that facility as well. So this is the design agreement, so we can get out to bid on that project by January and close the track down after the last events are over with in late May and have a completion date hopefully at the end of July, July 31st would be the target to finish that up and reopen the track at Learwood.
I'd also like to add that this was part of the five-year forecast last year, so this was already budgeted for. We had to do that because just like the tennis courts, it was in a condition, the track is in a condition where we're going to have to be forced to shut it down if we don't address the issues. So just so everyone knows, like, you know, why are you doing a project when you just had two, a levy and a bond passed? This was already budgeted and part of our expenses in our forecast.
Thank you.
What's the cost? Do we know?
This is for design services, we'll have another resolution for you to pass, but...
Just the design services.
But we have a rough...
Sure. The, the, there's a flat $25,000 for basic services to Benkei and there's some additional site work that needs to be done as well by a couple of additional contractors to do a study and a soil study because soils are always an issue in Avon Lake. So the grand total is, I think, $37,900. So it's between that $25,000 and $50,000 that we can go to a firm that we already have on file for design services. We received their qualifications within the last year.
And our, our high school track was in a similar condition. Now it's probably been five, six years ago and it was becoming a safety hazard and went through the whole process. Learwood has definitely been left longer than the high school's been maintained, so I have a motion to approve the...
How much do we charge St. Joe's to use our track?
My guess is we currently don't assess a fee for that because it doesn't incur any custodial or maintenance costs and because there are Avon Lake residents and taxpayers using that and because of our partnership with St. Joe's and being an outdoor facility, I don't believe we assess a, currently assess a facility rental fee or custodial maintenance costs associated with that.
Okay. Are we going to be looking at that?
We're looking at establishing rental fees for all of our facilities.
Excellent, thank you.
While, while we're on that topic, would that mean potentially, like, I know, like, the high school track is just open at all points of time, so would that include some sort of security to not leave it open or would you still leave it open to the community just if you're using the field?
We have to leave it open because it is a public facility, so they have to use it. But in terms of using it for games and for...
Practice, organized practices.
Organized practices, yes.
Yeah, would that, that, I would assume that would count all the soccer fields in Lear Road as well for Avon Lake Soccer Association and they're going to start getting a rental fee bill for our soccer fields?
We've been in conversations with them already just to talk through what that would look like. There's definitely some trade-offs too of things that they do for us in terms of caring for those fields. So looking at all of that in totality, it's not, that's not a simple answer.
Okay.
So back to the architect.
Back to the motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're getting there, guys. Superintendent's report, consent items.
All right, so for your consideration, you have some certified personnel recommendations, some classified recommendations along as, as well as some resignations, supplemental contract recommendations, a revision of a previously approved agenda items, just having a change of title on most of those, a grade 12 trip to Washington, DC. The trustee for the Avon Lake Public Library, as you know, we are their fiscal people, so we have to approve their new trustee. And then we have a... And then we have a service agreement with Mental Health Addiction and Recovery Services Board of Lorraine County for your consideration.
On the, you spoke about the grade 12 trip a while back, this is the COVID kids who missed it, who get a chance to go. Do we know how many have signed up for, for that trip?
I think 45.
Right around there, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and they're still doing the itinerary that the eighth graders essentially follow?
They are.
Okay.
Our eighth grade team is actually chaperoning the trip so that they can ensure that they are, that they get the same experience that they would have gotten when they were in eighth grade, so we're really happy and proud of our middle school team for stepping up to be able to provide this opportunity for our kids.
All right, any other questions on the consent items? Short list tonight. Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent items?
So moved. Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next item is the library easement.
Yes, so this is just something they, I'm going to save Ned here. This is an agreement that the library has already passed, there was, as we're redoing the tennis courts, there was an easement of land that we needed to have multi-use on, am I correct on that, Ned?
To continue maintaining the water path, redoing carrom and spaces.
So they, this has gone past the library board for their approval, and the last step in this approval for this easement is your blessing on it as well. For the sum of $10? For the sum of $10.
Is there any zoning issues with the city or anything that has to be, okay, because this is just our property, their property?
Our property and their property.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Can I have a motion to approve the easement?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ms. McGarrett, do you have anything else to cover tonight?
Just one quick comment, we had our first Take Back Togetherness Night last week on November 13th. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback from it, I think families really enjoyed shutting off their phones and spending some quality time. People were very willing to share stories about playing games and surprising grandparents and bringing dinner over, and, and just a lot of positive feedback. So we do have another one coming up in March, and we're looking forward to making this just part of our yearly calendar to provide these nights where people can just unplug and unwind and enjoy a night with their families.
All right, the next item on our agenda is an executive session. For those of you who have not been under meetings before, we have certain items, in this case, an issue of employment to discuss in private. We won't take any action during that meeting, during the executive session, we'll come out and simply adjourn the meeting, so that essentially is going to end the business part of our meeting, and we'll, we'll just wrap up with our executive session. So could I have a motion to approve the executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It is now 9:21, and the Board has reconvened from executive session. Do I have a motion to re-enter public session?
So moved. Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, a motion to adjourn?
I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvina?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries, and the meeting is adjourned at 9:22.